Good morning. It's now the hour of nine thirty. I'll call the workshop for January twenty eighth to Oregon. First item of business, we have POTS and associate legislative update.
Well, good morning. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
Oh, fantastic. Well, I'll start this one. Thanks for taking the time. It's been an interesting end to last week that kinda threw a tailspin again on session. So you may have heard, and I put some of it in the the update. There was an emergency meeting Friday night called by the Speaker of the House that in short changed the rules of how the House operates specifically on final passage. When they're discussing bills, the rule has always been since the late eighteen nineties. It takes a two-third majority to agree to end discussion and move on to considering passage of the bills or amendment, or whatever that might be. Friday night, they scheduled a meeting that the Speaker didn't notify anyone about until probably about ten thirty or eleven on Friday morning. And the subject of that meeting was to change, one of the things was to change that rule to a simple majority vote, which the majority party pretty much always has. It's been a really long time since we've been a split house. So, long story short, the effect that that has is now basically any bill that's on final passage, the majority party from here until that particular rule is changed, I will be able to end discussion despite the minority's opposition and move to final passage. It really could speed up the process. So there are a couple of things that, you know, a minority party in the House could do to mitigate mitigate the impact of this particular rule. Whether it'll happen, I don't know. We'll see how House Republican leadership handles it. To make matters even more interesting, the House Speaker and and House Majority Leadership has kicked the governor's staff out of the House proceedings without an invite. So previously, the governor's staff was welcome, you know, I mean, we're not saying on the floor, but they could be in the wings and they could go into the offices of the Speaker and floor leader, et cetera, to just kinda interact. And they kicked him out. They said, you can't be in here. We can't kick out the governor himself. However, your staff cannot be here without invitation. This is really kind of viewed as a retaliation to the governor saying, hey, I'm not gonna sign off on all your new taxes. You guys need to make some substantial cuts that to the tune of four billion is kind of what he was talking about. And and his moderate line on taxation. That's what is perceived here. That doesn't, I I don't know what the end game is. I'm not, you know, I'm not one to try and predict, but I can tell you that what is happening doesn't necessarily make any sense at all. And the majority party is currently dealing the minority party a heck of a public relations hand. We'll see how this shakes out. There has been, you know, some challenges, I think, in the House Republican Caucus with respect to leadership. All of the leadership in the House Republican Caucus is new. And none of the leaders have more than four years' experience in the legislature, nor do their LAs. So it, what's happening is I think there's a pretty steep learning curve here on the minority party's part. And the majority is seasoned veterans. And they're kinda getting taken to school right now. We will see what happens. But this has thrown a whole new spin on session. We thought we were gonna be coming into this and getting into a rhythm, and then this happened. Now, on the other side of things, over in the Senate, things seem to be kinda business as usual. I was asked the question yesterday, what are these particular actions gonna do with, I guess, the power balance here from the House to the Senate? Specifically, I was asked about, you know, what is this gonna do to Jamie Peterson's plans? I can't imagine that the senators won't be putting pressure on the House members here to get stuff done, play nice. I really don't know how this is gonna shake out. There's gonna be a lot of negotiating when it comes right down to the end. Now, that all said, I know that for you guys, especially some of these property tax bills with renewable energy and stuff and and tax allocation has been a big deal. We're probably gonna see some movement on something this year. Well, the idea was before Friday, we were thinking that that was gonna be the case. We'll see how this shakes out. There's, you know, the standard kinda reappropriation of REIT redesignation of a, you know, a renewable resource with respect to the taxation authority, things like that. I don't know what's gonna happen. Representative Mary Die has some interesting, let's call it, nuclear options that she's talking about dropping right now because there's a lot of rural areas that are having issues specifically with the same thing you guys are, you know, you get some new resources in the area, maintenance costs go up, tax revenue doesn't, and it becomes a problem. So we'll watch Representative Die to see if she's able to to get any traction on her bills. I don't know if she's dropped them yet. But, you know, I mean, it really does redefine the tax structure. The FSEC bills, redefining the approval process, you know, I think that's gonna be quite a fight. With respect to the email I sent out with the kinda the lists of some of the bills to watch, I wanna highlight a couple of these for you guys, cuz some of them can be, you're probably looking at them going, why is that even on the list? Fifteen thirty-one is the last bill on my list. Definitely look at that one. That is an override of local control, and they're looking to make decisions in public health at the state level and push them all the way down. That one is, we talk about that every week at the lobbyist meeting on Thursday night. I think I know where you guys stand on that one. Have a look. I don't know if it's gonna move, but just in case. One of the other ones that we're looking at is fifty sixty-six, and this is the, in short, it's the state attorney general's ability to subpoena local law enforcement. Right now, I'm seeing kind of a straight-down-the-middle split on, from the counties, whether they be rural, urban, no matter where they are, on this bill, I know nobody wants, and this is the conversation, okay, nobody wants the state attorney general subpoenaing subpoenaing their local officers. The conversation has gone, well, okay, if they're gonna subpoena our local officers, they're gonna do it anyway. Is it worth us fighting that and going to court and spending valuable dollars to fight something that's inevitable anyway? And I don't have an opinion either way. If you guys have comments on that one, please let me know. I mean, I don't, I don't wanna just give up and acquiesce to the, oh, yeah, sure, go ahead and do it. But there is a valid point there from a financial perspective, so something to think about. Fifty-three thirty-two and its companion, fourteen forty-three, is mobile dwellings. Jamie is working on this with with Wasolfo. Their biggest concern, especially in the rural areas on these bills, is they just don't wanna see, say, a mobile home park or something go in or expand where people are getting their water from a frost-free faucet, you know, and maybe just running their corrugated pipes out of a, out of a house into a hole-in-the-ground kind of sewer. I mean, not just a regular sewer hookup, but they just don't, they have sanitation concerns. Really interesting one is family burial grounds. That's ten sixty-five. I threw this one on there because the Department of Health is telling us this is gonna be a big bill and there's gonna be a lot of to-do about it. We don't know why, but it, you know, I assume that family burial grounds will probably be a little bit more of an issue maybe in rural counties as opposed to Spokane or Seattle. So I threw it on the list just as something to to watch. Not real sure where that one's gonna go. Outside of that, you know, the wood burning devices, fifty-one seventy-four. They're really trying to limit fireplaces. On this bill, I had a lot of people contact me on this. There were nine hundred and some people signed up to register an opinion. Over eight hundred of them were opposed to this. Hopefully, they got a, got the message. We'll see on that one. There are a couple of growth management bills coming out. I don't know if they've been dropped yet. Representative Engel from the Seventh District is looking at putting two bills out, one of which would say that in an R-twenty zone, so twenty acres or larger parcels that a family, you know, Grandma and Grandpa, Mom and Dad could sell. I don't think he put, I don't know if he put the the number on it, but maybe five acres to their son or grandson or something in order to establish their home. That's one. That's been tried before, kind of legacy stuff. We'll see if that one moves. I don't know. The other one is, he's calling it villages or or small communities within your GMA planning zones or maybe not even in GMA, and I don't know if this'll apply to non-planning counties. I don't know yet. We haven't seen it. But where there's a cluster of houses, he's advocating for more dense developments. Let's say there's twelve houses in a little spot that's an unincorporated area. It's not a city. It's not a town. Well, let somebody plant a house, you know, next door to the end house because there's already a higher population density. So just some some things like that that are are coming down the pipe here. Again, this little stirrup in the House really makes this, we have no idea what's gonna happen. I don't know how they're gonna play nice together. The Republicans have some nuclear options here where they could literally slow the process down to a single bill per day. And they can just stop the process. I, I don't know. We're gonna see what happens. I think that, kind of speculation here, the reason for the rule change is because I think the Democrats are a little frustrated with a lack of communication. And it's early in the session. So that's that's the report this week. Again, I was hoping to have a little bit better feel on how things were gonna go, but then they went and kicked the hornet's nest. So do you guys have any questions, anything specific you're looking at? Any questions on anything that I've talked about?
Just one quick question on fifty sixty-one, requiring certain wages in public work contracts to be at least the prevailing wage in effect. What, what are they trying to get to there?
Um, so what they're looking at on this one is, example, you might bid a project today and award the project tomorrow and then do the work in six months. Prevailing wage may have changed. They're basically pushing the prevailing wage to at the time when the workers are boots on the ground, starting digging in the ground, you know, shovel, whatever they're doing.
So, yeah, so that could just change what the project's cost was estimated, and then you have to change it down the road. So a lot of change orders.
It does make it a little bit more difficult, and I think that's been part of the conversation around it is, okay, well, do we, do we try and budget for an increase in the prevailing wage? I mean, don't really see it go down much, right? So I think they're just kinda trying to normalize that conversation, and I don't know if there's a good way to do it. We're gonna find out.
All right. Thank you. One I had, I was curious.
Zach, can you can you elaborate on the the five-acre farm and the the GMA and cluster houses?
As soon as we get a little bit more feedback on the bills, I gotta check this morning to see if he actually dropped the bills.
Does that, is that a number?
I gotta see if he actually dropped them. This was a direct conversation with the legislature legislator, and I'm I'm actually just parroting what he told me he wanted to do. I don't know if he's dropped them yet. Let me, you give me just a second. I will look and see if he has. I'll pull down to his thing, see if he's dropped these bills yet. He has, oh, there is one brand-new bill. Let me see what it says. Unincorporated villages. The bill number for the unincorporated villages and growth management is sixteen ninety-five. And there's no online text available. They're still processing it, so he literally probably put it in the hopper last night.
Okay.
So, but that will be the bill number. Just keep an eye on it. So, yeah, unincorporated villages.
Any questions?
Oh, thank you.
Is there?
Sure.
I know this, I'm concerned about the freeze on the federal grants and loans at the federal level and the impact. I know that was just as of last night or yesterday, but definitely a significant impact with my department's senior services and Older Americans Act funding, as well as transportation funding. We're very dependent on the federal funds that come through to support our senior nutrition and transportation and then transportation programs. So I'd be interested in knowing about any updates or things that, if there's any talk at the state too, about how that's gonna play out.
Absolutely. That's a great question, and I think it's a good observation. I think what you just highlighted and what we're seeing from the feds coming down is one hundred percent the reason behind our governor's moderate approach. I mean, just straight across, he's never been this moderate in his public service tenure, ever. And him coming out as as just a straight moderate approach, I think, is a direct preparation for these federal funds and grants and the money coming down because I think he knows if we're too far to the left or too too liberal in our policies, the Fed will pull our money. And so what I would say is, you know, we really don't know how the federal side is gonna go. I think they're gonna evaluate and account for the money and then reopen the ones that they think are are managed properly. But I can tell you from out, like, you know, on the outside, looking in at our governor's office, I do think they got our backs on this one. I think they're taking positions that will help us maintain our federal dollars.
Well, and Zach, too, yesterday I heard in a meeting I attended with another group that it's impacting applying for new grants because they have to adjust their language. They've been told they are not allowed to include any DEI in the grant language or expectations in the grant, and it could even impact grants they already hold. If there's an overstep there, they may have to either turn it back or give the money back, is what they're afraid of.
Yeah, and I think that's a definitely a legitimate concern, being that, you know, the, one of the first executive orders was to end all the DEI programs and lay off all the DEI staff. So it's certainly something to consider, no matter how you feel about the DEI programs. It's definitely not beneficial to have to pay money back or lose an existing grant because there is a component for DEI. So we'll be watching that for sure, and I can guarantee that the legislators and policy staff will be all over this one.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Sharon.
Absolutely.
I guess we'll move on.
All right. Thank you very much. As always, call or text, email anytime, and I'll be around.
Thank you.
I think it.
We'll go to Public Works. I know they have a very short presentation to us.
We'll make it quick. Perfect. We'll be piggybacking right on Zach's stuff. We have another bill we would like you to.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, well, I wanna be recognized.
It seemed to work with my computer too well.
Oh, I really can't help you there, which I could, but. So we have a couple of things on your consent agenda. One is execute contracts and bonds for the Bickleton Highway Overlay project. The other one is accept and release retainage contract bonds for Knife River. This one, there was another bill that Zach did not bring up that's on the agenda. It's about how government or public agencies pay the contractor. Part of that may include retainage. You have a thirty-day window. Well, we're controlled by the state when we release retainage. So to tell you what that means is, if we had a thirty-day window, line or item B, which is the accept and release of retainage, we submitted that to the state back in June. We just got the release. They're trying to pass something that says that we have to pay the contractor their stuff back by the thirty days, which means we take on the responsibility.
Because the state's the holdup.
Exactly. Their departments are the holdup.
That tell us, yeah, they paid prevailing wage.
Yes. They paid all their taxes. Exactly. So I've just given you guys, I know WASAC is coming out. They've come out opposed to that bill.
Does it have a number? Do you know the number?
It does. I don't remember which, I don't know the number. We could get you the number.
Yes, please do.
But that one for us is a big one.
Yeah, if we have to pay the retainage out of our pocket and then wait till the state gets back to us and for us to collect the retainage out of an escrow.
Well, what typically they, we hold their retainage, but we're holding their retainage. We're required to hold their retainage. So they put us in this no-win situation. Right now, we're required to hold retainage of some sort, either a bond or a cash. And some contractors choose to have you hold it in cash. Well, if it takes six months to get it, and the state now enacts a new law that says we have to pay them within thirty days, their retain, all their holdings, then that's a problem for us because the reason we're required to hold retainage is if the park, like, they don't pay the prevailing wage, they come to the county and we give them the retainage. If we don't have the retainage, we pay for it out of our own pocket. And the other bill that Zach had mentioned about the increase in prevailing wage. Again, I, state needs to, they they got, they have better things to do up there, but anyway. You know, you sign a contract, that's the prevailing wage. That's how it's been. And there, the contract is required to pay that prevailing wage at that time throughout that project. Now they wanna come in and change that, which, just like they said, now we have all these change orders that we're gonna be stuck doing with increases. In the past, there's still a legitimate change order if you hold it over for a long period of time, and the price increases a lot. We had one, we did a change order, but it was a one-off thing cuz they increased prevailing wage for sheet metal workers, and we had a, had a HVAC contract that went up ten dollars an hour. Okay, that's a big hit. That we took care, but all these other things for fifty cents and all that, that's just a bunch of extra change orders and a bunch of extra costs, and it changes everything for us. It isn't just, now you you have two, you have a bunch of different books, and it's just a real pain. But anyway, I've said enough about that, and I will leave it at that. I've said my speech. Go ahead.
That bill is Senate Bill fifty-one seventy-six, which has to do with crawl pavement. Construction program, Bickleton Highway Overlay, Box Springs, contract bonds on the consent agenda, as Jeff said, item B. Sunnyside Road Overlay, staff is working on the preliminary paperwork to get that project up and going. A start date has not been set for construction yet. On the design end of things, the bridge repair bundles, we're still working with the consultant to get through the environmental processes, which would be a pretty lengthy process, it sounds like. White plastic edge lines, there will be a consent agenda item next week to award that to the low bidder. Curve warning signs, we're still working through our internal review and getting the mid-pack it put together for workshop review. Road safety plan update, there will be an agreement on the consent agenda next week for that consultant to get started on that project.
Okay, East End, we're doing some brushing, guardrail repair and preparing for winter. We've done quite a bit of work in Wishram. We have just a little bit more to do, but that'll come when we do hot mix patching. We we cut down some of those lovely trees of heaven or whatever they're called. We took out the dead tree in the park, so we've done all of our projects early this year in Wishram. On the West End, we have Fisher Hill guardrail repair. Somebody hit our guardrail up there. We got some brushing and we're preparing for winter. We're expecting snow, I think, Friday.
Friday, Saturday.
Hopefully not much.
Yeah, look like Sunday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Yeah, so hopefully not. On the utility, on the facility side, courtroom is kinda the same thing. Delivery, plastic panels are scheduled this week and be installed. Events, we have a Valentine's Day kid party in the exhibit building on Saturday. Fuel Islands, the same jail vents, same jail upgrades. We're working with Bill to select some projects. We've split aside some money to do some projects for upgrades, part of the old last year's budget. Dellsport Community Center, the ceiling insulation in Sheep Rock is done at half the, half the ceiling already. We're moving ahead on that. Some heads up, maybe more for next week. You'll see the duly barn fees on your, on your consented, cuz we don't have the schedule for the duly barn. We don't have to discuss this. This is just kinds of heads up. We will be reevaluating these fees before next year's budget. These are the current fees right now for all the facilities out of the area.
Oh, all right.
So everybody's on, in case you guys get hit on. So those are all there. Again, we'll be discussing those more later on. A park attendant, we're missing our park attendant that can be decided not to come back.
Start date also, so we have to. Thank you.
So we're back in the process of looking for another one if we can. It is a contract. It's not an FTE. It's a contract. It isn't really an employee. It's a contractor. They, they stay at the park and Ben decided not to do it. So if we can go out and look for another one, we greatly appreciate it. Not saying we'll get, but.
I know always in the past, I even remember thirty years ago, that was an issue, finding people that wanted to work there.
Wanna work there and fit in with the drop-laid community.
Or even a camp host.
And that's what this, we call them park attendant, camp host. It's basically the same thing. We pay them two thousand dollars a month and they get a camp slot. Quick approach, looking for another one.
I think we still need to have somebody there.
Yeah. I think we have some things to talk about, about, try like park upcoming things. But you're gonna have to have somebody in case we don't make other decisions, so.
Right.
Yeah, probably better start looking. It's not easy to find.
Have some things we need to work on and discuss.
Yes. Okay, and I will end it with good news. We, speaking of grants, we received eighty-four thousand dollar grant from WASAC for the energy audit. I explained we have to start to, we have to prepare for twenty twenty-six for our buildings, for the three, this building, the courthouse and the Pioneer Center cuz they're over, they're they're type D buildings, so we have to. And they will actually come in and do an, we'll, there's a list of consultants. We'll, we'll float an R and P. We'll select the consultant. They'll come in. The eighty-four thousand will pay for them. Come in and do an energy audit, and they'll tell us basically where our buildings stand. This one, it's brand-new, you know, it's, it's, this one won't be, you know, I'm sure. Well, here at the courthouse, we should do this, we should do that, we should do this. And then we'll get to the point where they'll say, we recommend these is your heating, cooling levels. We, you know, we expect you'll turn these down. But that will be required by twenty twenty-six anyway, so we wanted to get on top of it and not have to pay. WASAC stepped up, said they'll pay, or they offered grants. We applied, so. So unless the board would, has another idea, we'll bring that forward next week, too.
It's just not a reinventing the menu.
Well, WASAC stepped in. WASAC stepped in, yes.
It depends what the outcome of the audit is and how you.
Yeah, then now you got paid for it, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, and for us, it means a lot of extra, uh, tracking. That we'll have to do starting in twenty twenty-six, we're, I mean, we kind of do that now with the preparation. But there's this program that is, um, it's an energy, I keep up the name of it, I should, but, um. That we have to actually plug in all our bills into, it'll tell you what level you are at. And they'll have thresholds back, you know, with ideas to get to certain levels. So, um, one other thing I have, just to give you a heads up, we have a couple, um, RVs parked in the right of way, um, we've been. Uh, I just told Joe, who's gonna help us out with the one we have in Wishram. And we are working with the person in Glenwood. Um, if we don't get any response, I think we will, if we don't, then I'll go back to Joe and we'll start the process, we have a process.
So Joe, do you, do you think that the, bringing on the energy consultant? That will, I mean, so usually do that and everyone agrees you should use less energy and save money and pay less in utilities, but do you think? The result of that will bring down our costs, or do you think? Because of, if we're having to plug in computers and then fill out all this paperwork and then maybe barely reduce our energy usage.
I don't know that it'll reduce our cost, I mean. It, it will make us feel better, but, uh, I don't know if it'll reduce our cost overall. The problem is, is we're required to do.
Cause, cause we, we already are doing a lot of that stuff, I mean, this whole building was built. So we'll spend the eighty-four thousand and they'll say this building's great, that the building needs a little work that. We may or may not be able to do and.
The problem is. Yeah, we, with the eighty-four thousand, we have to do it anyway. Luckily, we're required to have a baseline and they'll set the baseline of where our buildings are. If, if luckily WASAC stepped up or we would be paying for it. Cause that is kind of an unfunded mandate, thank goodness though, WASAC stepped in and took away that offended mandate.
Yeah, the hospital, I, I know Jonathan Lewis has been doing quite a bit on this and. It even came out saying if you upgrade to all LED, you have this costing. But then it starts identifying the cost to do that. You know, that's not a cheap.
No, it's not. Overall, it, you know, like you said, you gotta weigh it, does it really pay for itself? Um, and that's something we've looked at, like LED lights, we've kind of done that on our own. There's an outlay, if you work, we schedule it, so if you do a little bit each year, eventually it comes in, come on. Um, certain things may not pay for themselves. Sounds great, but ultimately it may take twenty years to pay for itself. And then in twenty years, the thing is obsolete. So, uh, we were ahead of the game on some stuff because all our units, mainly because they're outdated. All the units on the courthouse except for one, and that is replaced, this year been replaced with high efficiency. So that's one thing they usually target. Thank goodness, we've already got past some of the, and at the Pioneer Center. But, you know, and we've replaced the windows, we've replaced the doors. I know at the Pioneer Center, we are working on that, that's part of the list of the non-capital stuff is to replace stores. To replace doors, because a lot of those, most of those doors, except for the ones we replaced, are single. I don't know why they're single pane, but they are. So we've been replacing those. Uh, so it'll be things like just, you know, like Commissioner Ira was just saying, similar to. Uh, again, another one of those laws that was passed last year.
I, I did notice we need a new weather stripping in the binging room in the Pioneer Center.
Yes, the doors in there are all awful. Remember we replaced the glass of the doors there, that's where we figured it out, we were in there doing something. Why is it old in here, where's that coming from? And we looked at the window, but the, the glass windows is single pane. You can feel the air coming in from. I don't know why they were like that, but anyway. I think that's all we have.
I'll, I'll give you my energy audits for free.
Okay, good, no, no money required, oh.
And I'll pick up a jacket, you need to be single.
Yeah, I will say so, that, good deal.
Alright, any questions?
If we could see, maybe see Commissioner Zola, if she's available later on this afternoon, we have a couple things.
I'll get in touch with you.
Okay, thank you. Look at us, only five minutes behind that.
Well, you're working, man, we took some of your time. Thank you. Alright, Sheriff's Office Department up today. I'm gonna say thank you very much for sending out your flyer ahead of time or your discussion.
Yeah, that was kind of a challenge, but we made it.
I absolutely love the new software. It's so easy to use and, um, easy to get everything uploaded and we changed our schedule around. To make sure that we were able to meet the deadline, but yeah, it was great. And we can get other additional things uploaded into our packets in a time and manner that way, so thank you.
That's good to hear, so change is hard sometimes, so.
Yeah.
Job at least, Sally.
For us, it's been hard.
We'll fully admit it.
So, good morning commissioners, um, as you know, or maybe not know, uh, Sheriff Sanger had a hip replacement. Um, last week, it was this very successful surgery, he's home recovering, he's. I have videos of him trucking up and down the hallways at the hospital and, uh, up the stairs at home, so. He's anxious to be back to work, um. But he is doing well and we're glad that he's not gonna be in so much pain anymore because it was pretty painful, so. I'll go ahead and read his update. Um, so let's start off, there were a total of six hundred and six calls for service throughout. Clicktack County, which included calls within cities from January first to twenty twenty-five to January sixteenth. It should be noted that out of the six hundred and six calls for service, three hundred and eight of those were, um. Sorry, were in the unincorporated areas of the county and were handled by the Clicktack County Sheriff's Office. In addition to the calls of service, the deputy served a total of sixty-four civil papers during that same time period. On January second, Todd Andrews and Ron Ira were sworn in as new Clicktack County Commissioners by East District Court Judge Rick Hanson. I'm looking forward to working with the Commissioners, Todd Andrews and Ron Ira on public safety issues. Judge Hanson also swore in Clicktack County Sheriff's Office, retired Sergeant Eric Anderson as the newly appointed Clicktack Coroner. And it should be noted, Bob Kinnler, a retired Clicktack County Sheriff, will serve as Deputy Coroner for Eric Anderson. I know both Anderson and Keller to be outstanding professionals and they will be a credit and asset to the citizens of Clicktack County. I would like to talk to the new Board of County Commissioners about replacing the money that was cut from the Sheriff's. Office twenty twenty-five budget by the prior Board of County Commissioners, Jake Anderson and Lori Zoller. I'm requesting the new Board of Commissioners replace the three hundred and eighteen thousand that was cut from the Sheriff's. Twenty twenty-five budget, this will allow me to hire the two deputy positions that are already funded. I will be doing follow-up with the Board of County Commissioners in regards to the animal shelter being completed and staffed. On January twentieth, twenty twenty-five, from five thirty to seven thirty PM, the Sheriff's Office. Hosted an event for the Sheriff's Posse and the Junior Posse Scouts at the Golden Dale American Legion. Located in one oh eight North Grant Street in Golden Dale. This was a pot style, potluck style event. Sorry.
Glad I could entertain.
Thought this was gonna be an update.
Okay, we'll try this.
Okay, maybe we'll just read what's here.
We repeated the posse procedure training and administered oath of office for promotions and accolades for the posse membership. And talked about future events and opportunities. This event was free, however, any amount of donations given to the Sheriff's Posse and the Junior Posse Scouts are greatly appreciated. Please refer to my report on patrol, um. Chief Criminal Deputy Lauren did not do, um, a report this time. I should see one, uh, the next month from him. And then Chief Civil Deputy Karen Ehlings will also be doing a report on the budget and related matters. Alright. So my report, do you guys have any questions from Bob's that other than mine?
No, I, I just would like to make one quick comment on item number three and maybe I'll follow up and follow.
Okay.
I, I just want to take time and say thank you Karen. Both of you, or allow me to use up some of your time yesterday to, to try to understand where the. The dollar amount came from, because I even had a little different. Uh, mine was just the comment, um, these possession, positions. In the budget just weren't authorized, I, I didn't view them as cut. But that's further discussion we can have down the road, because I felt in my research, the budget was increased almost four hundred thousand. From last year. Lot of moving parts, a lot, and that's why I appreciate able to sit down with you and I'm looking forward to sitting down with Bob too. Uh, when he gets healthy and I did see the video of him going up the steps yesterday and he actually did it really well.
He's trucking along pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I was pretty impressed, but that, that's the only thing I have on that, uh, those items, unless you guys know before they move forward.
No.
Thank you very much.
Alright, so onward and upward.
Yep.
Public safety is the utmost and first priority for the Clicktack County Sheriff's and should. Office and should be the priority for the Clicktack County Government as it encompasses a multitude of topics that we must address, prioritize and plan for. The public relies on the Sheriff's Office to provide service twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days of the year. And with the diminished resources and tight budget constraints, this is more challenging now than ever before. This year, we will become more involved in the planning phases for upcoming housing and economic development projects in Clicktack County. This will give us an opportunity to address our concerns at the onset of any planning for an increase in population, economic growth. That directly impacts the Clicktack County Sheriff's Office. Construction phases of development, whether it's a housing development or commercial, historically attracts criminal activity. Including theft, vandalism, to name just a few. Following construction, we will see an increase in calls come relating from alarms, burglary, theft and more. In twenty twenty-four, the Clicktack County Sheriff's Office responded to nearly two hundred reports. Of commercial and residential alarms in Clicktack County. Many of these are false alarms resulting in deputies traveling at times long distances to respond, only to find employees. Who set off the alarm acknowledging that they did so and not even calling in to report that it was really a false alarm.
So have we ever billed?
Have we ever billed them?
Billed them, yeah.
No, and that's, um, why I am attached.
Yes, I see.
I attached the ordinance.
Yes.
Because that would allow us to do that. So, um, numerous counties across the state already have ordinances in place. And Clicktack County does not have an ordinance in place that I can find. So that would help us, um, maybe change some of the things that are happening currently. Cause my fear is we're gonna be out heading to Bickleton and we only have one or two, you know, maybe. And we have some major burglar or, you know, whatever crime in progress domestic, we have a lot of those. And it's on the other side of the county, that's up to a two hour drive. So, my, you know, I, I think it's in our best interest to hold these, um. Uh, the people accountable for their alarm systems.
Thank you for putting this in, so we look at it.
You're welcome.
Do you know about, it says many of them were false alarms, do you know, is there?
I didn't have time to calculate all of how many were because I'd have to go through and read each one. And right now, I mean, yesterday I spent, uh, hours yesterday going through six hundred and eighty-six reports, so, um, for another.
I know it's been a, a problem in the past, uh, so many people live rural. And they, and they're absentee landowners, so they install systems and a bird hits a window. And then there's nobody to call, they have to go out and see.
Right.
After so many, and if their system's dysfunctioning and you're out there six times, you finally just say one.
Right, and. And what happens too is people don't update their responsible with dispatch, um, you know. Fire departments have the same issue, right, there was, I, I can't tell you how many calls to Mary Hill Museum or Mary Hill Winery. And they're really not founded, they're false alarms. So it's not just the Sheriff's Office that's responding to these calls, it's your fire departments as well, we're going to call.
Good point.
That are false alarms and that, we have to figure out a way to, to fix that. And constructing a new ordinance is one of those ways, so.
I appreciate your research.
Well, without Sergeant Riggers back here, I probably wouldn't have, um, as good as information, so thank you, Joe. Uh, Sergeant Joe Riggers and I will be sitting as ex-officio members of the Solar and Battery Energy Storage System Advisory Committee. And we will also be working with the Clicktack County Planning Department to review and plan for any developments. That will directly impact the citizens that we serve. And then I will also be attending the Clicktack County Interagency Fire Associating Association meetings when possible. Um. After reading, uh, a proposed, maybe development coming into Dallasport, it really drew my attention that. You know, that development alone could double the size of Dallasport. Wow, you double the size of Dallasport. It also double the amount of crime and the activities that happen in Dallasport, so. I think there's a lot for us to, to think about and how it impacts our offices as well. The Clicktack County Sheriff's Office was awarded two new radar systems from the Washington State Traffic Safety Commission on January twenty-sixth, twenty-second. And these two systems are valued at over four thousand dollars. Again, uh, this goes hands out to Sergeant Riggers, he, um, wrote the. Grant and also submitted and attended the meeting last week where all of these grants are awarded. Again, the Washington Department of Transportation has awarded the Clicktack County Sheriff's Office twenty-five thousand dollars. For chain enforcement on the state routes this winter. This money will be used to pay overtime costs for deputies who will be called out to specifically enforce the chain up enforcement during winter storm events. Again, this, um, should be attributed to Sergeant Riggers as he worked closely with, uh, Washington DOT on that. I'm happy to report that Deputy Heifer Smith, our lateral hire from Spokane County Sheriff's Office. Has completed his field training and is now on solo patrol. Entry level Deputy Brian Nicholson, who was hired on January first, he's been riding with his field training officer Deputy Ben Horning. And amazingly enough, he will be starting the Basic Law Enforcement Academy in Pasco. On February tenth, with graduation set for January, uh, June seventeen. No.
To get in.
No. We were so lucky, the Pasco, um. Class wasn't filled and so as soon as I had all of his hiring documents and everything I had, I submitted it. I believe on January second or third, I mean, I, I had it in there so that we could get him, um, into this class. So we're pretty lucky there.
Good job.
Yes.
Um, we would like to encourage all of our residents to sign up for an emergency notification through the Department of Emergency Management. While it may not seem important at the moment, we know the importance of notifying our residents in an emergency such as a wildfire event. Found this last year, um, people weren't signed up and they were scrambling to get signed up for wildfires. Sergeant Adam Diamond and Sergeant Randy Wells are enjoying their new leadership roles and have continued to work on team building and training opportunities. It's exciting to see their eagerness to learn and work together on a regular basis. Um, some additional training, um, that I'm recommending for them is the IC training through FEMA so that. Um, when we do have major incidents, that they could be the incident, uh, command, part of the incident command staff. Our canine program will be expanding this year thanks to the donation of funding. Deputy McBride will be our second canine handler who will attend his ten week training beginning, beginning in April. Clicktack County Sheriff's Office will have a busy twenty twenty-five. Any other question?
You know, is that emergency notification, uh, is that on our website?
It's on the web, yeah, it's on DEM's website, it's, uh, easy link to go in and. It's uh easy link to go in and and take care of that. They al- actually also have a form that um. Businesses can fill out for all of their emergency contact information. I don't know if that's available on their site, but they can go through DEM to. Update their contact information.
Once again, just have to compliment you, getting a new officer in. Seems like those usually are way out.
Yeah, it's, it was crazy. I mean, we were scrambling just to get all of his equipment and gear in. Um to have it ready, I've still got a few more things to secure this week, but.
No, compliment meant to be.
Thank you.
So let's do the civil division update. I'm not gonna read word for word, um but I will highlight us um on staffing. They held the civil test this last weekend and delivered us four applicant packets, so we will be pursuing um. The next steps for those four. Um thank you again for. Posting that test and I'm looking forward to having the next person sitting in that seat. Um. And like Chairman Ira said, uh we did get together yesterday and go through some, so we match everything. And um we'll be working with Sheriff Songer and under Sheriff Knops and we will be getting uh. Some refinements done for our twenty twenty-five budgets. Uh sex offender report, we've got eighty-one um active sex offenders. Um and we do have one homeless one in uh Bingen, Washington at this time. Um as of the date of this report, we've uh received a second person that's come into the county that's homeless, so. We've got those two. Um. And this is a. Program that takes not just my time and the criminal records time, technology. Technologists' time, but it also takes every single deputy to go out and do add- address verifications and things, so. Uh it's a huge program for us and it is funded by WASPIC. So. Got that. Um Range Timber Program, David Van Larr uh is getting up to speed. We're just waiting for his vehicle to actually be available, um but right now he. Um I'm not even gonna talk. Uh but um.
It's only money.
But the uh he's been working and talking with um the deputies on do's and don'ts. Um as this is a new venture for him as well, um but he's excited and uh. Boning up on what he needs to be doing, so.
An excellent choice.
We are going to um set up a meeting with all of the share stakeholders for the timber programs and then we'll do a separate meeting for cattle. Because they have two different, you know, focuses and we want them to be able to have someone on one time with them.
How how is that funded? Is that just general, is that?
So thirty-three percent is funded by um. The share, the stakeholders and then the rest is on the county. And this last year, we spent hardly any money, we will build them, they're thirty-three percent, but um. We are, we're very fortunate that one of the posse members uh basically did the Range Timber Program. All season um for no cost to the county, not even fuel, so. Um we've been. Kind of filling in that gap, but Van Larr will be a great asset to bring it back up to full speed.
It's not a large budget.
No.
No. So we will get him, we will get him on the road as soon as possible. Uh body worn cameras, we um that were functioning. Uh we've received the new quote, I received it this morning, so I have not read it yet, um but I will. Take time to read that this morning. Um. And under Sheriff Knops has already talked about the K nine marine program. Um the news this morning of the federal grants was like, oh, well, it affects us with our marine program. Because that has a state funded portion and a federal funded portion, so we'll see how that. Uh washes out there, so. Um and then Posse, we had a wonderful meeting and uh everybody, um all of the different divisions showed up, so. Uh it was nice, including two of the uh commissioners, so thank you guys for coming. And uh we. Had a Posse member who's been deployed to um work on some highly technical things down in San Diego. On one of the new battleships and or destroyers or something. I'm not a Navy person, go Marines, but um. He came back to work um back up here and pursue his Posse. Uh. Uh what do you wanna call it, volunteering? And he brought uh Sheriff Songer some patches and things from the newly commissioned. Boat and so uh it's nice that even when they go away, they come back and they're ready to volunteer, so. That was very nice of him, so. Any questions?
No, thank you.
No, I appreciate the invite to to that event, it was, it's it's been neat to to understand the. Uh the depth of the the Posse and the, there's people in the medical field, there's people in in all walks of life and. From, I mean, like you said, highly technical engineers and 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 things like that and. Amount of services they do for our county, it's like rather than the neighborhood watch, it's like a giant county watch where they do. I think the the biggest thing that's. I was really impressed that they do, they do. What they call when people go on vacation.
Vacation home checks.
Vacation home checks and and things like that, so there are things that our deputies would normally have to do and it's it's helping to keep the the county safe and.
Exactly, yes. And I do look forward to, I believe it's working with you Commissioner Silver. On the fair this year for the volunteers, um getting everybody lined up, we usually start that, hmm, what about May?
Yeah, May, June, but we'll be.
Is that you now?
Yeah, and yeah, I'm still, I I resigned off the fair board, but I'm still working with admissions and we've used. Posse members ever since I went.
And he's chair this year.
Okay. Yeah. And I really appreciate it because they do. Not just ticket. You know, they they also roll the grounds, which helps a lot. Traffic control, especially on Saturday, Sundays. They do a lot of work and help us out at the fair time.
Yeah, so they're.
I'll be involved with that again, admissions this year and then Lori. Backish. Oh, uh is planning to take it over completely next year.
Perfect. So we're, we're getting ready for the fair.
We we appreciate it because they're a lot. And I should have said that that Monday evening, appreciation for everybody that does that.
Next year.
Okay.
I would like to take a minute and recognize um. Richard Flynn, he is our lieutenant for the Posse and I can't.
He's a major.
Always a major, oh, sorry.
He's moved up.
He's moved up, I knew there was a title change. I I'm always behind on them. Um Richard volunteers every day in the sheriff's office, he is our phone answer, he's the one who's doing all the fingerprinting. He volunteers eight hours a day, minimum five days a week, plus he's doing courtroom duty. Um without him, really, our office um would be further behind than we already are and we do rely on him and I just wanna. Uh the public to know how much we do value his um. Time and that he spends with us in our office and he is a valuable asset to the office and the Posse. Has a lot of duties.
And we only pay him four cups, uh four pots of coffee a day.
Coffee a day, so and some stamps, so.
He did a good job that Monday evening too.
Yeah.
Expressing his, what he's doing.
That's all I've got.
Anything else?
No, thank you guys.
No, and I appreciate the graphs, cause I'm a graph person and it really helps. Especially now when the cities are like, okay, what's our current expense money going for? And that helps of. Just how much the sheriff's office is helping city. Police or vice versa.
Right.
I know they're backup tests too.
Right.
Uh but it's just good to see the numbers, how that ties together.
So next month, you'll have the whole picture of twenty twenty-four with another picture for twenty twenty-five.
So right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, you guys. I really appreciated this ahead of time.
Like I said, I love that program.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks.
Alright. Move on. Alright, Rob. I see you have a lot of backup, Rob, is there an issue or something?
Yes. Never, we never have. I'm kidding. Good morning. So Friday I sent out. Documents from. Most of the departments with the information. We'll start with. HR this morning and and I'm not gonna go through the list. We've tried to group the things that we do under. Various headings, different HR floors. Group them differently, but this is kind of the core areas that we seem to spend most of our time on. And we can circle back to any issues you wanna drill down on, but I'm asking. Wanted to uh talk to you about the exempt, non-exempt issue.
You know, there have been a lot of discussions about um the salary schedules. And exempt, non-exempt and who qualifies for overtime and stuff, so. You know, give you a little history.
Thank you.
Where this this comes from, from the states. Of the state mandated stuff, do you want, no, I got one in my head. Hey, do you not want to? Uh well, actually. Sorry. So the packet that I just gave you kind of shows the last couple of years of where we've been with the. Um. Threshold between non-exempt and exempt salaries and it's just a difference of. Who qualifies for overtime and who doesn't. And the thresholds are set by the state, um and they are different than what the federal thresholds are. Um and every year they come out with a schedule and what the projections might be. And then they wait for the CPI to come out and then they set what. The rates will be and what the thresholds will be for the following year by the end of October typically, so. Um the last couple of years, we've been waiting till the end of October to see what. The actual threshold would be for the following year and then we have to make the adjustments accordingly and. See what positions or what grades would be affected and um make the adjustments. Um I know moving forward, we're gonna have to. Um. Review some things and probably a salary schedule and see how we are going to move forward with this and if it keeps affecting. Our exempt employees and non-exempt employees. And uh figure out maybe a better process of. What we do to make the adjustments. Um you know, right now, it it this year, we had thirteen people, I think, go from exempt to non-exempt. And it was just uh employee. Position, it wasn't, it wasn't a grade, we just, we just reviewed it by employee and what their current salary was and we included their longevity. Um and I think moving forward um. An overview of everything will need to be done. Um if you look at your twenty twenty-five salary thresholds. And moving forward to twenty twenty-six, there is going to be. Um a far less change than there was this year and so. Looking at my records, there might be three or four employees at the most that would be impacted by it. Um so. This year might not be the year to do it, but twenty twenty-six where there would be. You know, few employees impacted by it, that might be the year to look at. At how we move forward with these changes. And how would review it.
Also important.
So salary was one of the thresholds. Was there any other threshold?
The salary was, was the main one and that's what we've been going by.
And I and I was gonna address that, it's a good question. Uh it's good to remind ourselves that the basis of federal wage and hourly law, state typically mirrors the bits. It's that the rule is, everybody gets overtime. The exception is people get salaried, you say it's not exempt. Um and then to to qualify for the exemption to be non-exempt or to be exempt. There's, there's various tests in such salary, weekly salary. Is in all of the tests and then there's one for management, one for professionals, one and there's, I think through maybe four different tests. But salary is the main one.
The biggest one that's hidden.
Yes, yeah, yeah, cause there's some positions that if they're a licensed professional. Then they, they have to meet the salary threshold. And they can be a licensed professional and then stay in the exempt status.
It's not an and or it's an and, salary and, whatever the exception is.
This will be a good discussion.
Yes.
And we've been updating the commissioners at least twice here for the last, for the five years I've been here, so this isn't anything new. Anything that should have.
Well, I just heard from several departments. Because in turn, they did not budget overtime. And there are people that moved from salary to hourly, but with no budgeted overtime.
A lot of departments don't budget overtime. Cause it has to be pre-authorized, so it's.
Yeah.
It's not automatic, it has to be pre-authorized and if they don't have it, then it becomes a supplemental issue.
Thank you.
And a large group of our employees are hourly, so all elected, all directors have hourly employees, this has nothing to. We just added thirteen more people to. Uh a number of other folks that that are hourly, so. Yeah, it's nothing new to the organization.
And um if if I had questions for you as far as going back. Twenty years in time, thirty years in time, I mean, is is. Is our stuff up to date as far as, or do you gotta go back to other records or or different software program to really? Look at this over a large window of time?
Look at what specifically?
To look at number of employees, look at salaries, look at payroll. Cause we we we've had brief discussions over a couple of years and.
I could help you with any of that, so like this, this salary schedule was implemented back in twenty ten. Um and it was a huge undertaking. Um and that was right before I came on, um and I know we did the salary survey. Um but yeah, if you, if you have questions, I can, I can get you all the information. And as far as this uh implementation with the salary threshold, um that started back in twenty sixteen. The state started discussing it and so I've got my folder with all of their. Um information on how they, they started rolling it out and stuff, so I I can show you all of that. Any questions?
I mean, again, the rule is. Everybody's all, gets overtime and the exception is you don't. I think you see why the government's raising the salary threshold is. Uh is to push more people into the overtime so they're not get uh working excessive hours, not getting paid for it. I mean, that's the underlying, the the wage an hour.
My, my questions would revolve around education for the commissioners about. If you've had somebody that's been exempt and they've been working evenings or however they have to do to get some work done and now. We can't do that and they were in a situation where there was overtime a lot and. How do we have those discussions about that work getting done? Is that a discussion about we just need to fit that work between eight and five and you need to figure it out or what, what are the alternatives? And that could be a workshop.
Yeah, I I think some departments might be.
They might be struggling with that.
Priorities.
Yeah.
Um yeah, and change the path.
And there's a.
There's, I believe, a flexible work.
There is, yeah, okay, so.
How I've started handling. So.
Yeah, yeah. So the hours, the hours worked from Sunday to Saturday. Um are trapped and you have the, the ability to. flex some of those and.
That's how I, as chair, started, had started handling that, right or wrong? I, I mean, we've got to because there are certain days like Tuesday. You know, we may have some employees here ten hours with us and no way around it, but.
And comp time has a cap?
It does, yeah.
It gets paid up.
At the end of the year.
Okay.
Do you know what that cap is? I think it's twenty hours.
Depends what department and what union contract.
Right, for regular employees, in the employee handbook, it's twenty hours. It varies for some of the union contracts and carryovers and cash ops at the end of the year.
Yeah, I appreciate you mentioning this because I heard quite a bit of it. You heard quite a bit of it too, Todd, if I require.
Well, you're a lot of it too.
Yeah, yeah, and the fact that we were dealing with it on a case-by-case basis, I think it, it has to be a bigger discussion and moving forward, we're gonna have to look at how we want to get the.
And there's no question up there. There's an adjustment period for someone who's been salary for a long time ago directly or a department or an office that is been able to have a higher degree of flexibility. I mean, it's really an adjustment. Federal law, federal law. State law, state law.
Yep.
I know it was gonna go much faster under previous administrations and the next administration slowed it down. Though the last one sped it up, this one might slow it down again. Sometimes we, the state, all the vets and build adjust these these caps, things, so they could change again, probably will.
It's just when the state of Washington goes, whatever, other than beyond federal law.
Yeah, I guess, the minimum wages are.
Just, just whatever, you know, and just.
Yeah, I've heard, and I remember when, when, when I had business about five years into it, that's when Washington State was raising the minimum wage. I think they did it like three times in five years, and one was a big jump, and it was tough to keep. My employees that I had for a long time, they were actually the, the best and longest employees. They were the most affected because I had to raise these ones, whether they were worth it or whether they just started. And so all, all these other employees and managers, they they were much slower to get a pay raise because I just couldn't pass the, you know, you just couldn't find that amount of money that quickly.
Anything else? HR that you wanted to talk about specifically or? With that today, we just wanted to kind of introduce you to all the different departments and what we do. Some cases, it'll be a multi-part. I've talked all individually, you know, our big goals we share is the collective bargaining process, and I'll be meeting with you in close session, various times strategize for that this fall. But we're just in the data, data gathering mode at this point, so so that's gonna be a big, big project for us.
You know, how many contracts up?
Five, five, all of them.
All, all that. Answers that.
Yep, so. Anyway, if that's no questions for you at this point, Casey's gotta run. Maybe, well.
Thank you, Casey.
You know, that's okay to leave.
All right. You're up.
See, just get somebody else.
That's right.
Cover his.
Yeah, he's got five other people.
Thanks a bit.
I think we, we have two hundred and roughly two hundred and fifty employees in the county.
Thirty-five full-time, part-time, and then if you add the casual.
That was in, that wasn't, that was like a state mechanic, because I, I gleaned that from you guys earlier. And, but a lot of people don't know that.
So IT department, Randy has put together two packets of information, one for this meeting and then one for a future meeting where we'll talk more about his goals, what they're working on and their areas of focus. Wanted to, this meeting. There is. Yeah, our, our department. Can give you a sense of the equipment and the different things that, that for FTE are, are working on and working with in a given, in a given day, so Randy, go ahead.
Okay.
That one you wanna tell me?
Yeah.
It's already.
And don't push that button.
Yeah.
So first off is our mission. Our mission is simple, customer service. We're here to serve, and our customers are the county employees. They're you, they're you guys, they're, they're every other elected, they're everyone. Yeah. Every other county employee. And like I mentioned in the workshop a couple of weeks ago, the best way to, to serve them is, is proactive. Trying to stay ahead of the problems that, that may exist or, or that may arise. And, and like I mentioned, you know, in a perfect world, which we are not there, it's, it's an eighty-twenty split. Eighty percent should be proactive and twenty percent should be reactive. The reactive stuff primarily is a catastrophic failure, which I hope never happens again during my time. But it has happened. Yeah, so, so that's, that's the reactive stuff as well as the day-to-day service calls, help desk calls. The proactive stuff, we, we, we encapsulate that into projects. And, and I've got a list of projects, which is in my next, my next update. We can, we can talk about it if you're interested. But so, yeah, so that's, that's our mission. Okay. Employee positions, we have a total of four people in the IT department. There's me. I, I do the, the long-range planning and things of that nature. And then there's system administrator too. That's the, that's the advanced level of system adminis- system administration. That is our, our expert. And that is, is Curtis Schlegel. He's, he's, and I've told him this before, he's our, he's our leatherman. He's our, he's our, you know, he's the kind of guy that, that if, if because believe it or not, there are several avenues you can go in, in IT. You can be a database administrator and spend your whole career being a database administrator. You can be a network administrator, same thing. And, and so on and so forth. Curtis has a lifetime of experience doing all of these different things. So he's, he's our guru. He's the guy that we go to. When, when there is a, a complicated technical problem, he's our starting point. We have system, system administrator one. That is Shelby McKern is system admin one. That's pretty much a training position that, that she is, is gaining the skills, and she works closely with Curtis. And she's gaining the skills to become, to, to become you know, the to come up to, to, to his level. She's been there not quite a year, right around a year is, is what. In the new position, yes, yes. And, and she also, you know, she also processes our payroll, or not our payroll, but our, our accounts payable, that things of that nature. Help desk, so we actually have two help desk levels. There's, and, and Jordan Laurie is in the help desk two, which is the advanced help desk one. Okay, he is what Curtis is with everything else. Jordan, I think he just comes by it naturally, is, he is the PC guy. Right? He knows computers. He is, he is if, if I ever have a question about computers, whether it's a laptop, a desktop, a server, doesn't matter. Jordan is the guy. He also, he also is, is the first line of defense for for help desk calls. So when you, when you call our help desk, you'll probably, or send, you'll probably come in contact with, with Jordan. And, you know, he's really, he's good, he's let me put it this way. I believe Click Attack County is very fortunate to have those three people working, working here for us. You know, I, I think we have a great team.
I think what you see what Randy said when he got here was is we, we have to grow our own. Finding IT people is a tough market, expensive market, very competitive market. So bringing people in at the option of the help desk one or two, and then moving them through the system by the time they get to Curtis' level, they've dealt with the frontline issues, then what we call the backroom issues, you know, the servers and the stuff behind the curtain. And so it, it just, it's a natural progression for somebody's learning curve.
Well, I just appreciate seeing Randy after I left twenty-eight years ago and he was here.
I just hung out.
And then he came back.
Yeah.
I learned from his example.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can blame him for that. He was totally content on his lavender farm until I, I was a flower farmer. That's the last of my son, Paul.
No, I mean, in my limited experience engagement with your, your team is, is quite impressive and.
Yeah.
And Curtis does come here every day?
No, no, he spends, well, he comes here on, his routine is to come here on Monday. And he spends the day here on Monday. The rest of the week, he is in, he works in White Salmon. Because we've got, we've got the Pioneer Center, and we also have the, the, the public workshop shop out there, so he spends. And most of the work that he does at his level, he can do remotely. You know, he, so, so he does a lot of work on equipment here from his desk at, at Pioneer Center.
Perfect, yeah, because I've been wanting to run into him and then seen him. I, I thought I saw him one time briefly in the parking lot.
Randy has a weekly staff meeting Monday with his team, and so they, Curtis comes up so they can lay out the work for the weekend.
So, yeah, so what we do is, is every morning we have a planet day meeting, and I'm sure you've seen, well, actually, I'll, I'll get into that. I'll get to that.
To see your update.
Yeah, my.
I am.
Yeah.
I was calling white in the sideways, I didn't do anything.
And this is IT.
Yeah, yes. You know.
I don't like it to get on the day computer at midnight, so I'm not saying anything.
They're very patient, huh?
Okay, so, so that's the employees. Their infrastructure, we have, we have eight locations that we, that we support. And those locations at the courthouse, emergency services, nine-one-one center, administrative services building right here, NX four, the fairgrounds, public workshop, Pioneer Center, and public workshop in White Salmon. And so we, you know, we randomly visit all of these sites all the time.
And when I started here, we didn't do a lot of work at the dispatch, for dispatching. They were kind of on their own, and they still are in terms of the radio system, but when Randy joined the team, he's been working with Jeff and Phil, and I think you've heard Jeff and Phil talk about that. It's a, you know, it's a critical area, and so that they have.
Same, I'm sure you have by touring. They have a lot of different programs going on at the same time, a lot. I, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, well, so, so as far as technical infrastructure, they have radios. They have computers, internet. They have a main database. It's the, we, we call it Spillman. I think it's changed names since then, but, but they have a main database, Spillman, that they also share with the city of Goldendale, the city of White Salmon, and the city of Benjen, I believe. And the jail and the sheriff and, yeah, and every, every place else. So they have that. Of course, they've got two phone systems. They've got their nine-on-one phone system, plus they have they, they have an office phone system. I mean, they are the most tech-heavy department in the county. You know, and I didn't let go there, but, but they could be, there could be a full-time IT person just for that department. I, yeah. Yeah.
But we're not asking.
We're not asking.
Jeff will ask you.
Yes. Yeah.
I, I really didn't want to go there.
Yeah, Jeff on vacation, so I can. Yeah, I really didn't want to go there, but, you know, I mean, the, the reality of the situation is. Hardware. So the hardware that we support, we've got about three hundred and twenty-nine computers and laptops. We have a hundred and sixty-six cell phones. We have yeah, let's see, we have, we have three hundred and twenty desk phones, we've got fifty-five tablets, multifunction printers, we've got thirty-three network laser printers, we've got thirteen. We've got post servers, which are the physical machines. We have ten. Virtual servers, which are the servers that we, that still have to be maintained. The software on them has to be maintained. We've got fifty-three of those. Okay, we've got six firewalls. We've got thirty-six network switches. We've got Wi-Fi access points. We've got forty-five, and we've got seventy-one security cams. These numbers are growing. And we maintain them all. Okay, to the best of our ability. Okay, so the, the workflow. Okay, so in the workflow, that's where I was going a few minutes ago. So every morning we have a planet.
So the, the number of laptops and computers surprises me, but I mean, I understand some of it, but that's it's like one and a quarter per person.
One thing we've.
And I understand, like, sometimes there'll be a desktop or, but.
Well, we have kiosk machines. We have what's another example? We, we have tried to narrow it down to some degree.
Before COVID, we probably were heavily majority desktop individual workstations and, and some laptops. But after COVID, when realized people had to be flexible, and in terms of business continuity plans, in case of disaster, having people be able to move their work site, so the last commission gave us the direction that when we go to replace somebody's laptop or desktop, if they have both, we worked really hard to get them to combine it and just have a laptop with a docking station. Because for every laptop or desktop, we have to pay for the licensing. And so there's double the cost for, for some of the licensing that we have, so we're systematically over a five-year period trying to and most departments and electors understand that and, and have moved to the having laptops.
And are a lot of those being, do you think a lot of those are older and kind of being phased out, like?
So. Yeah, so we have an inventory. Actually, we have, we have software that, that maintains the inventory for us that actually goes out and, and checks to see what machines are online and how long, how long, you know, when was the last, if they are offline, how long have they been offline, you know, so is it just like over the weekend? Or, or has it been offline for three months, you know? So we, so we do have equipment that does check that.
IT also has a six-year, they're one of the few departments that has a six-year capital plan. And they look down their old six years on when PCs have to be replaced with servers and those kind of things, so, so they can budget ahead and know what the expenses are going to be.
So I'm not sure I answered your question. I started going off on a tangent.
No, I was just wondering how many of those, because there's probably a hundred employees in the county that don't even have
Yes.
Computers.
Yes. Well, what I can tell you is because I took these numbers straight from our system, and that's how many computers are.
But I mean, oh, that's how many are active?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, there, you gotta remember, some, some still have to, a desktop and a laptop. Some departments may have an additional laptop that they, they keep on site. We've tried to push that down a little bit, have the reserve of so many machines in IT in case somebody loses a machine, I mean, in terms of what's working or something. So over a multi-year period, we're trying to reduce that.
You just have a low technology.
I mean, to provide the licensing for, for a machine is, is really expensive. And if you do it three hundred and fifty-six times, it gets to add up pretty quick.
You don't have to love it, but you, but you have to, you have to learn how to live with it. So.
I'm working on it.
Yeah. So, so the, the, our workflow, our, we start every morning, well, Tuesday through Friday, because Monday we're all in the office, so, so I, I really didn't see the necessity of a of, of having. There, so, so Monday morning, or excuse me, every morning we have a planet a day meeting. And, and I send you guys the report, because I write a report, and frankly, I And, and I send you guys the report, uh, cause I write a report and frankly, I write it for my own purpose. But I, I run it up the ladder. Um, and, and let you guys see it. If you don't want to see it, let me know. I probably take you off the list.
Those are impressive reports.
Yeah.
It's, it's neat to see.
Thank you. So, um, yeah, so, so in that report, I've got daily statistics and I don't know if you want me to go through every, every statistic. I think so. So, so, yeah, so I, I put in the daily statistics and then basically what we're doing. Um, you know, or, or excuse me, it, what we intend to do for the day.
Because everything changes, I'm sure, every morning.
It does, it does, but if you start out with the plan, then you've got a plan to change. You know, it, if, if you don't start out with a plan, then, you know, it, it just feels like there's better structure if you do. Now, uh, there are areas where we could improve, like I said, we could probably spend more time in emergency management. Uh, if, you know, it, um. We could also spend more time on the website, uh, the way the website, or quite frankly, the way the website is managed. It's not centrally managed at all. Everybody thinks it is. Everybody thinks, well, website, that's ideal. It's not. Um, every department manages their own page. Um, and that's, that's, you, the syst- I, system was set up before me and, but that's what we're living with. Um, and then, um, we could probably spend more time on security cameras.
Part of the issue with security cameras is they get put in with a new building or an upgrade or a change. With really no long-term plan and who's going to monitor them, who's going to get archive the information, how long we archive information that. Uh, if you can imagine, um, seventy-one cameras. Thirty days, sixty, ninety days of, of film on, that's, that's a lot of storage and, and we pay for all that. Somebody pays for all that.
What, what, how, how does that work now, every, every building monitored?
So we have two main systems, uh, here.
And maybe we shouldn't even talk about this. It opens our security.
Well, we're not going to go into it.
Okay, whatever detail, don't let me.
But we have two main systems, one for this building and I've extended it over to behavioral health. And then the other one is for, uh, the courthouse and the jail and, and that area. So, so there's two, two systems. Um, you, you know, they are, where you are capable of viewing it. Um, I think all of the cameras are viewable from the nine one one center. Um, that's by design, uh, so if there is any kind of an incident where. Where, let's just say, police can't walk into the building, um, there, there's eyes in the building. And, and so the dispatchers can, can start directing the, um, the police to what's happening where.
So. The emergency management cameras that are sites.
Yes, that, there you have their own.
Maintaining by them.
Yes.
Through contractors.
Yes, yes.
Okay, because when you start saying cameras, uh, you said you had two.
Two mains.
Main.
Yeah.
And I didn't hear you say emergency management cameras.
Correct, and they have, yeah, they have another system that they maintain that we don't.
Okay.
Yeah, that they maintain that we don't have to do it. There's also a system, a small system. In, um, in the Pioneer Center, but it only covers, uh, district court. Uh, the different district courts bases. So, yeah, like I said, a lot of this stuff has grown organically as the need arises. Another one gets put in, um, with no real central idea, central plan. For, okay, so we need more cameras here. How do we adjust our system? And it's just, oh, we need a camera here, let's put one here. Any questions?
I, is this the end of IT? Is this, is this the wrap-up?
Not sure, we're doing good on time. I would like to take a break.
I just, as a wrap, I, the. I, I'd like to, and some of this is gonna have to be further, but I've, I've seen, um. You know, like, what, what did you just say to Ron? Like, uh, whether you like it or not, you gotta get used to it, or whether, you know, I mean. This, this is, this is the path, this is the direction, this is, this is, the technology's not going anywhere, it's here to stay and a lot of it's. Extremely helpful and, 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 and can just, what, what you can accomplish and do. But. Technology for technology's sake, cause that's why I've seen that budget is eating counties alive. Because we didn't have that before and the thought twenty years ago was like, oh, this is amazing and what we can get done. And one person can do what three people can do, cause you're not filing all this paperwork. And so I don't know if we've ever looked at that, like, okay, um, cause sometimes you, you just have to have it. Whatever the expense is and because it's a mandate, because it's coming down from state, because of security or something like that. But do we, do we weigh those decisions like, okay, we're gonna have this computer and this software here? This should. Make them so much more efficient, or this should be, we should be able to file. Because, but that's usually every conversation about the software, about the technology. Is like when we were doing the one for our agendas, it was like amazing what they could do. But it's probably not going to reduce any staffing or any hours. And, and so I've seen that, I've seen the software and the technology grow and actually some of the employee numbers grow along with it.
Think it just gives more information that people, you get too quickly.
So, so I agree with you about, about, um, uh. Technology for technology's sake, um, there are, you know, there are poor, uh. Uh, implementations of technology and just, and just to say, well, you know, I'm gonna buy this big Miss Bank thing. And it's gonna do my job for me and I can just sit and drink coffee and watch it all day. No, no, it's a tool. It's, it's a valuable tool. It's looking like a chainsaw. You know, a chainsaw, with a chainsaw, you do a lot of work, but if you don't know what you're doing, you can cut your legs off. That's what, that's what this is.
Then.
And. Oh, this is a good one. Um, that's not gonna work, but to go back to, um, well, touch base on, on one thing, um. We're stuck with technology regardless because the federal and the state level is using technology and we have to adhere to that, um. AI is being involved in a lot of government processes at this point in time at a high level. Um, and we are constantly catching up, um, to then touch base on something that the board had, um, asked earlier. Back to HR and the salary adjustment schedules and, and whatnot, um. How, the question was how do departments adjust for that salary adjustment? That's no different than how do departments adjust to technology? And some of the things I fi- have found is that. Not all departments or offices are, are doing reviews of efficiencies. Um, we've had the lean process come through. It's been years since that's happened. I think that was my first year. Um, but looking at the priorities, looking at efficiencies, are we using technology but still really heavily paper burden? And that, I can tell you is still happening in a lot of departments. Um, where we're trying to get away from paper, but we're still duplicating the efforts, um. And I mean, there are some offices, some departments are, that have made that adjustment. Um, prosecuting attorney, I think fully went that way last year, year four, um, but. That's something that could tackle both things. If, if we're, we're looking internally, what are our processes? Are they efficient? Um, what can we do away with? And what are we keeping just because we're comfortable with it?
Anyway, when you also look at the IT's budget, you know, it, it works grown is, um. We continually try and centralize. I mean, Randy will pay, IT will, will budget and pay for software for, uh, an office or a department.
Yes.
Uh, and so we're trying to, as opposed to having twenty-seven different buckets of IT money, which is probably the case four years ago. They, we've, we've tried to centralize all of that.
So that's still not comparing apples to apples. I mean, five years from now, it should be apples to apples as far as IT goes in that budget.
And the value of centralizing is, is if there is a valuable tool that one department uses. If it's centralized and I'll use, uh, the OnBase system, I don't know if you're familiar with it. It's a, um, it's, it's the, the record-keeping system that the clerks use, it's counting the, uh, spirit or clerk uses. Well, we've expanded that because it's, it's centralized and, and we pay the bill to the. We pay the bill on it, um, it's expanded. I think the, um, public works uses it, uh, for their record-keeping. Uh, there's a couple of other departments. I can't remember exactly which ones, but basically it, you know, this piece, this, this database is, is a, um, is a file gap. And all you gotta do is arrange the, arrange the files and it, it, it worked for you.
Um, another good example of that would be Smart Sheets.
Yes.
Um, where it started with two departments, um, or essentially one budget, IT's and mine. And as, as that's been pushed out, as departments and offices have seen, um, the work that can be done with it. You know, they ask me, I send them to Shelby and, you know, we get, we get a better rate for having more people on that. And because it's all centralized at one place, we're able to analyze that and take advantage of that cost benefit.
And, and I'll guarantee you, none of the elected sort of directors are all, are looking for leading edge, uh, leading edge technology. If you're just, you know, nobody's trying to be that far ahead of the curve, so in case we're just trying to catch up.
Catch up. It's a lot of catch up.
I know Curtis Schlegel pretty well, but his genius has not rubbed off on me one bit. You look at it, I, I don't think of him as a IT, you know, he, he, he looks like a, he lives out in the woods and. My, my kind of guy, and he does, yeah. Um, so have you, have you done a review of that? Have you gone back and looked at how? Programs or the software or, or some of that can, can have some efficiencies or is, has that been done ever in this county?
Not officially, but I'm always looking for opportunities to, to use what we already have as opposed to reinventing. When you, you know, when you silo this stuff, um, every department thinks they're unique and, and you reinvent them.
Right.
When you start sharing resources, then, then, well, we don't have to reinvent, you know, we simply add on what we already have.
And, and to your, to your point you made a minute ago, I think maybe. In the eighties and nineties, you could say if we get this software, we can, you know, five less positions. I think the flip is true now. We got rid of all the, um, technology. You'd have to add a lot of employees to, to what we now do with computers. So I'm not sure anymore. There's a, uh, a direct correlation between if we get this software, we can, we're gonna save forty hours or we're gonna save a hundred hours, I think.
No, and I, I'm not a Luddite or by, by any means, and so I just, I wanna, um. Look at those, as I've been talking to certain people, I don't want, like, to have good, helpful conversations that are, that. You know, glean some wisdom from other departments and other spaces and, and to talk about where we're gonna move forward to, doesn't mean. I don't, I don't think something's a good idea or we shouldn't have it or something. It's, it's just being, uh. Thoughtful, I guess.
Yeah, um, you, back to what you said, you know, I started working here in the mid-nineties. It's a whole different world now than what was in the nineties. Um, it's, it's, I mean, you know, this is not the same way to your department, um, than it was in, you know, nineteen ninety-five and six.
I've never let Randy come up here again. I need to move on to the next department.
Yes, it is, huh? Lot larger department. With a lot more information.
Well, so, yeah, people-wise, we had four people in, in the mid-nineties, we have four people now.
I was thinking two.
No, no.
So we're fifty percent.
Been trying to get everything.
So that whole transition. It's that whole retail market thing. So we submitted, uh, Randy Woodford McKenzie as well and, uh, so she's gonna go through the first part and then I'll, uh, back clean up and.
Good morning. Just to kind of summarize my much longer report, our main focus right now is the Lisswiffa Grant. Cause that provides the majority of our funding for our programs. Um, today, actually later this afternoon, you guys are signing an amendment for the current biennial grant, uh, we had to move funds around. Mainly because the hazardous waste collection was more than, uh, yeah. The hazardous waste collection was, ended up being more money than we anticipated, um. And cause we signed on with a new vendor ACT in Viral, which is a subsidy of Republic Services. And then I am currently applying for the next bienniums grant that's due February twelfth, and so I'm putting all that together, meeting with my great manager to. Get that funding secured.
At the same time, um. We've started up, I think we're gonna have the third meeting of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. And I know Chair Eric said, oh, maybe the first Solid Waste Advisory Committee we had. Uh, which is mandated that we have this and it's a good idea. And the previous commissioners appointed various, uh, representatives from different industries and at large. And, uh, McKenzie's doing a great job of getting that group up to speed and formed. I think the next meeting is the end of February.
Yes.
And, uh, that plan comes up for, um, review every five years and this year we're laying the foundation to get that work done, uh, for twenty-six. Uh, it'll, a lot of citizen input, a lot of, uh, and I know, uh, White Salmon is an expressed. Our representatives from White Salmon, Benjin have expressed an interest in organics. They also have access to some of this, uh, two-year grant money we have, which is good. Try and reduce the amount that gets sent back to the state and, uh, so they can come up with, uh, programs or pilot programs. And they've had some meetings with McKenzie and Republic. I think that's a good thing, so. Um. McKenzie always says a really good word. Joe Johnson is the landfill compliance officer, so Joe's not here, but I talked to him the other days, um. He said things, because of the weather, they're not experiencing any weather delays out there, the trains are coming in and they're, you know, they're hauling the cans up the hill, which is good. A lot of times, weather can impact, um, and want them to keep the trains moving and the, and the stuff going up the hill. So Joe said it's, uh, everything's going well there. Joe has an office out there in a separate building. We're gonna have to paint that this year. And maybe have the roof sealed and, um, so they made that a paint party out there. But, um, and then Joe's vehicle is scheduled to be replaced this year. Once we figure out the process, uh, to do that, I think he's starting to have some issues with, uh, with the truck he has. So we have the funds available, we just need to start the process to, to replace that, that vehicle for, for, for Joe. We, uh, at the end of the year, signed a contract with Aspect Consulting to do the final post-closure work on Horse Thief Landfill. Should have been done a very long time ago, but, um. We're back at it now, so, uh, we'll be working with, uh, David Kavanagh, Environmental Health Manager. And, uh, the, we'll be jointly overseeing that contract, mostly David in the first part. Cause it's, uh, all the groundwater testing and air quality testing, which is, uh, David's, uh, wheelhouse. And so we appreciate that. Solid Waste is paying for, at the Solid Waste Fund is paying for the cost of this, it's about fifty thousand dollars. Uh, McKenzie did, uh, become aware of a state grant or federal grant.
I, it's a federal one, so.
That, uh, that could cover somewhere all of that. We've applied for that. We, uh, we have the money in the Solid Waste Fund. But we went in to apply for it to maybe be able to offset some of that impact on the Solid Waste Fund. We need to get this closed, part of the deal set Republic up years ago. And, uh, it's been limbo and we need to.
We were working on it thirty years ago.
So David and I, mostly David has had, uh, Kavanagh's had meetings with ecology. They're worried what we're doing. They're glad what we're doing. They'll be included every step of the way. Aspect Consulting works with ecology a lot on other projects. And so we're hoping we can do the required testing and then move that out of post-closure. And then the next discussion would be what to do with the property or not to do with the property, but that's gonna be down the road a year or two. Should take most of this year to get through the whole project and, uh, hopefully ecology will, um. Uh, move us out of post-closure at the end of the process. So that's gonna be a, a big project and we appreciate public health, environmental health partnership.
The state parks own the property all the way around. I don't personally think.
If, if not all, most of it.
Yeah.
And then the previous commissioners, back two or three sets. They talked about possibly donating that property to parks because it is surrounded by state parks. But until the property is out of post-closure, it, um.
Yeah.
Really can't do it, so, so that'll be a decision. For the commissioners down the road somewhere. We're working hard to get to that point. Give me any cleanups?
Yeah, the community cleanups are in full swing as far as planning goes. I attended a Zoom the other day for the White Salmon's Binge and Clean Up. And they're probably our most extensive and most participation in the cleanup. And then Dallas Port is planning on doing theirs again this year. This will be their second year. So they learned from last year and are kind of redoing how they do things and they're ready to go again. Um. Golden Nail has planned their dates. We're waiting on High Prairie. Um, and I usually do the cleanup with Centerville Schools. We don't have a set date, but they usually do it on Earth Day, so I anticipate that'll be the same this year. Um. And I need to reach out again to Click Attack and then hopefully we'll be able to include Wishram then.
Yeah, I think that suggestion or wishery, I mean, because the school, it sounds like the school account takes off.
I've asked George and um. McKenzie to meet with the gentleman from the school district and see if there's way, each one we do something different. Sometimes it's helping them uh. Hit notification out. Sometimes uh McKenzie and um. Joe will will go on site and help like Centerville. I think they sometimes do that. So with Wishram, we we heard uh that they have a, the school can only afford a certain. Level and there and there's a lot of efforts in Wishram to make changes. And so uh McKenzie and George will be meeting. With them to see how we can help get their program, their community cleanup made to the next level.
Thank you.
Anything else you want to add? Any questions for Kenzie?
No, I just a comment that I appreciate all your help, especially during the fair. Get more recycling bins, just needed. Haven't got the cowboys used to. Working with them yet, but in time. On recycling their cans.
Kenzie does a good job, so it's a job, so.
Good, thank you.
George.
Save the best for last.
Well, Jim's actually gonna go last.
Still true.
So yes, that's the last.
So considering I'm working with uh negative two minutes left.
No, no, we got time.
Oh, do we?
Yeah, they're not hungry.
Um.
I was gonna say.
You might want to take a break before me.
Can we, how about if we take a quick ten-minute break? And can we, can we finish in time?
Yes.
If we take a ten-minute break.
Yeah, you gotta get going, George. Uh, whatever, uh, whatever.
We'll ask George in fiscal.
I can make mine quick and then.
Okay, why don't we make yours quick and then we'll take a break.
Before one before mine.
I don't think you're not doing the quarter, fourth quarter. Oh, gotcha. Yes.
Go for it, Jordan.
All right, so I'll try to.
Taking a break or not?
George is gonna do.
If you do his role, where?
Yeah, I'm gonna uh just knock at my door real quick. So I provided a a a report as well as some charts. Uh, but overall, just that I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is George Sines. I do uh. Uh, I work for Click Tech as the code compliance officer. Um, a lot of what I do, um. You know, it's all, my department's just complaint driven and. This is all our staff in front of you. It's just me and Rob. Um, so. It's a big county. There's a lot of issues, a lot of complaints that uh come across my desk and. To summarize it, I just try my best to find a resolution and um. It's working out quite well, I would say. Uh, voluntary compliance is. Generally my uh go-to um and in the charts that I provided, I just provide details for the last three years. Um, I did that intentionally. Um. Uh, last five years, you know, uh, my department was closed uh due to uh COVID. Uh, for the year of twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. It was then manned again in uh twenty twenty-two. Uh, our my, our former code compliance officer worked. Code compliance for, I believe, a year and a couple of months. And then there was a vacancy, uh, I wanna say a month or two with the year of twenty twenty-two before I was hired. So any any data before then essentially is skewed. Um, there was, there's the no point in including it. So. Last three years, as you probably can see, um, cases have risen substantially. Um, so. The the focus mainly for voluntary compliance at first, I I believe it just kind of came into fruition because I was just. Didn't have enough time to focus on each individual case as much as I would want to. I I essentially put the the burden on the property owners and then. Do follow-ups and, you know, provide uh education and then, you know, uh, provide suggestions and kind of some. Uh, oddball resolutions, but at the end of the day, if it uh comes to fruition, that's all that counts. Um, but. Uh, which which actually helped me because then now uh as cases have, as cases have risen, um. You know, uh, between twenty twenty-two and now, I'm generally getting about fifty, uh. About twenty to thirty K uh more complaints by year. So. More complaints, less time to focus on each individual case and it's just voluntary compliance has worked well and that's kind of the focus of my department.
Yeah, we feel strongly, uh, the the previous commissioners have as well, and that subject will change. That voluntary compliance is the best effort. Um. Occasionally, George will write a ticket if he needs to. Uh, we see that as a measure of success. Um, but it moves us into a whole other arena to do that. A lot of times folks who have these issues can't afford, so. Writing tickets on tickets is always the best solution. I think in in later on, maybe the workshop will show you some. Visual evidence of of some of these things. And I know the chair has seen one recently. It can take a while, especially if there's a civil process going on. On the property, but the end result is usually better and lasts longer if George is able to put together a voluntary uh process.
How? Just kind of a rough number. Are actually property owners. Versus people that may be renting or leased. Cause I know that's kind of different equation whether it's a property owner. Or rent or lease.
It really depends year by year. Every complaint is completely different, but um. Uh, at the end of the day, all the uh, all the interaction is done through the property owner and it's related to the tenant.
Okay.
And I, we debated, I I had George put this, he put it together and I had him do it for the whole year and I know you want to have a workshop on co-compliance.
Yeah, we want to follow up.
So we gave you that ahead of time. We would have brought that to the workshop to, so you have some detail and background as we uh.
So I think we just have said it as one of the priorities to go further into and discuss. How are we doing it? What's getting done, what's not, you know, in your perspective.
I think George is the co-compliance officer for all the titles except, well, which is the road.
Well.
Yeah.
That was new to me, so. Uh, when you start about sewage.
It's a lot, yeah.
Uh, sewage on top of that, you know. We kind of put it together, my thought process. You know, and I understand it's public health, safety, welfare.
Yeah.
Uh. But it seems like a lot's.
We rely on the expertise of each of the departments uh officers that have titles to be the subject expert as uh. As we deal with those. Last one, it was very wet, the never upset peak system issues. Could be wind. Through the rub, just.
And then I I I should have uh expressed that a little bit better at the initiation of meeting. Um. I I it's not just me and Rob. I work with, you know, every everyone in this county and sometimes even outside of the jurisdiction of, you know, that's. People from state or or from other counties, I relay ideas and. Um, it's not just me. It's a, there's, there's always a vacuum of people that are willing to uh to support me and. At the end of the day, it's just that it's another department or person in my tool belt and. Um, you know, there's, there's procedures and policies that I can follow. And then there's sometimes I get a little. Side tracked and I find other solutions right outside of our um. Of our uh, the counties. You can say jurisdiction, but um. As long as it makes it, I I make it happen, I'll say.
No, I know what I built with you and like you said, sometimes on certain. Like sewage, you'll take somebody from the health department with you.
Especially those move into the core system that look at PA's office. We need to have that. They need to have that subject matter expert.
Expertise.
Yeah.
And for 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 staff safety as well.
Yeah.
I I wouldn't, a lot of these properties, I don't mean to to be a. Uh, you know, like. Some of the, some of the properties are just, you know, they're a little questionable and even I feel uncomfortable going out there by myself. Um, so I wouldn't expect anybody else to just go out there and and, you know, hey, do this for me and go out there and take a look by themselves and. Feel comfortable asking, really that, but. But once we have two people that are uphill.
And and he's linked in with the sheriff's office. He has a call sign, a radio. He constant communication and the deputies are good to let him know if there's something he needs to know and vice versa. So um, they're also very helpful. So. So we'll go more than this at the workshop. Any other data you want to look at or how you want to look at um the issues, but.
No, I didn't. I I just don't have many questions because we've we've talked several times and. I appreciate what you do because that's a, that's a, that's a tough job and and I like the way the county does it is. As gently as possible and and as much heart. Where the government can have heart and be behind, not not try and just take it and find and.
So education first and I always follow up with uh, what are your circumstances? You know, everyone's always struggling. Sometimes it's not just financially. There might be something else going on in their life that's. Sometimes they just need an ear, you know, and it's like, hey, this, this is an issue. We need to address this. Give them a timeline, give them suggestions, provide them, you know, contractors or whatever, uh, you know. Off the record, you could say. You know, not endorsed by the county, but here's some contractors that have worked with issues like this in the past and.
And it's good to see some results too.
Yeah.
Positive results, which last one I had talked about. It was very positive and I know that took some time, but.
It will, it will show you some of those later. We're always very, we're always trying to balance. We don't want to embarrass anybody or in a public meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
And uh, but you know, there is some success stories we can talk about.
I want to treat people with dignity and respect and part of it is not putting their property out in blast and, you know. It is a win for my department, but we'll take a silent win and uh just move on, you know.
They got me really busy here at work. I'll try and get my stuff cleaned up so you don't have to come out.
Yeah, they may, the city may be contacting with the contractor, with the county.
Maybe if I switch to hourly, I'll I'll be home more.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Yeah.
Before you take your, uh, break, I just wanna. Uh, we'll come back and you. Turn it over to Jen. So I think. And it's important to me, and you'll always hear me say this. So Casey, Elizabeth, Randy, Curtis, Shelby, Jordan, McKenzie, Joe, George and Jen are not just FTEs. They're not just staff, they're people and they're really fine people. And I think the county is well served to have all of these folks um. Working for the county. So I always like to say their name because they're people. And and I think they're, they're, and the people first. And that's what matters. They're involved in the community. They volunteer in the community. They all have different interests. And do different things. They're part of the community. And it's just a pleasure and an honor to be able to work with them.
Well, thank you. Let's take seven-minute recess, be back at eleven forty. I just got. Eleven forty, we'll start the workshop back up. Thank you for allowing us to take a quick recess.
Anything you need. Uh, so I wanted to touch a base. I was keeping notes through the rest of our department's um. Updates and some of the things that you had. We talked a little bit about um how departments adjust to salaries and um and whatnot. I know that when I'm overwhelmed. Um, you know, being a department of, again, the two of us, um, I'm constantly taking a look at what my priorities are. Um. What can I flex? What? What efficiencies can I come up with in in that constant um lean process and analysis to make things easier on myself going forward? Um. Commissioner Andrews, you said, um, there were roughly about two hundred and fifty employees. I want to put that to a percentage of our budget. Um. Roughly seventy percent of our general fund is employees. So keep that in mind as well going forward. Um. And when you're looking at budget, um. I share a budget with IT, so I'm looked in there. We have different bars numbers, so it's if we're able to section that out. Um, but that was set up that way. Um, in the past, my predecessor was the director of IT is in budget. So um. When I came on board, the role was um adjusted, changed. To be more um aligned with what the county had had in line. So budget being the number one priority for the board um in that first workshop that you had, I wanted to take the time today. To dive into what my role is um for the board. As well as visual understanding. And I think it's important that we understand where we came from as well. So I'm gonna hand out a lot of stuff. It's for you to take home and digest, but I'll just give a brief overview going through that. I'm not gonna really dive into a bunch of of the announcements today. Um. First one. Uh.
Good.
I can get one.
Yeah, I do. I'm just using it out of my. Okay, so packet number one, there's. So cool, the budget being the first part of it. Cooperatively with the county auditor, um, I facilitate design, plan, coordinate preparation of the county's annual budget development. Um, process and to policy and direction from the board, the three of you. Um, in that I assist directors and elected officials regarding their budget throughout the year. Um, I manage the budget build process and the budget levels within Cuyana. As well as the budget master within Cuyana. Uh, we operate on nine budget levels within that system. Um, I'm responsible for the county general and the county roads um certification of tax levies. Uh, that has to be done every year. Um, it has to be done by a certain deadline and given to the assessor in order for us to collect property tax. Um, it's my job to present um and articulate the capital improvement plan as well as hold that uh public hearing and adopt on that. Um, co-op cooperatively uh with the clerk of the board, I manage a couple of the commissioners' funds, uh VRNR. Um, on that aspect, I track the inventory and I calculate the rental rates. While the clerk of the board manages the purchase authorizations and the AP for those funds. Um, cumulative reserve, um. That's cooperatively managed with the clerk of the board and economic development. You want a reserve hold point oh nine dollars. It holds our emergency reserves and it holds our accumulated um cash reserves. So I. I handle cash flow forecasting. Um, the clerk of the board handles the AP processing out of there. And economic development is responsible for getting the clerk of the board any of the projects that are aligned um with case of PETA for point oh nine dollars out of there. Um, to have the clerk of the board then present to the board and county commissioners to sign off on those projects.
Is that fund one twenty-five?
It is.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, and then. Prior to me, insurance allocations were handled by the clerk of the board, but with the changeover on how on the company of and how we insure the the county. Um, I've taken on the insurance allocations for the county as a whole. Um, any questions in regards to that? It's just a brief overview of some of the things that I do in regards to.
It makes sense to have it.
Yeah.
One spot and then.
So the first part of this packet, um, I'm gonna go into like the budget phases. This is a really good example here of. The MRC has had done up at one point in time in regards to the phases of the budget and MRC um. Provides outline and guidance for cities as well as counties. So there'll be some stuff on here and. That's starved or astray that wouldn't really apply to us, but there are things that we could do in that in that place. Um, as you, uh, as you already know, we've talked about the calendar. Um, it's on your consent agenda, so we do that um. This point in time of the year is when I'm starting to prepare um, handle the budget book presentations and build that. We are talking about next year going forward, that budget process, that calendar outline. Uh, we're talking about objectives. And taking a look at revenues and long-term forecasting ideally um in that in that point. Phase. Phase one. Is gonna be this next packet here. Um. Phase one is when I ask for all the dir- um, directors and the elected officials to provide any facility requests. Um, as well as any technology request and to start building their personnel budgets. I've created through smart sheets, I've created, um, online forms for them to fill out. If they have a facility request, so the first page is really just a screenshot of what that electronic form looks like. It auto-populates into a, basically a, a spreadsheet. That is shared with the coordinated departments of public works and IT. So that they could, if they wanted to utilize that as a project management tool as well. Um, it also eliminates the, um, manual work on my part with that auto-population. Prior to me, it was like a hand-filled form, got sent and put on my desk and I would have to type that into a form and. And all of that. So this is all auto-populated now, um, and a simple look for all three departments.
So you got most of the bugs work out, out of.
You know, this one, this one did go pretty.
Because originally I remember getting multiple emails of each department.
Yeah, yeah, that was the template setup and yes, I, I think I did get all of that worked out.
Thank you.
It, it was a, it's a work, smart sheets has a workflow, um, and tons of templates. So I just. I utilized a template, modified it, but I didn't realize it had a data flow to it. And so anybody that was shared with, it, um, started sending, hey, you have an alert to go approve this request. And whatnot. So I, and I, I'm pretty sure it was, it was Ron who was like, Jen, I don't want these emails because he was the fair court. President at that point in time. And so he had a.
Need to see emergency management.
Uh, so, and then the personnel side of things, that's also in smart sheet so that I'm able to, um. Smart sheets is more dynamic. I'm able to, um, set up. Parameters and it'll pull from all of the grids, or we call them the grids, um, but the Excel version of a spreadsheet. Um, and it'll auto-populate a report for me. So that's why I have them do, it is in smart sheets as well as our new, um, ERP system, um. Utilizes smart sheets on the budget end of things already. So it was kind of a way this year to get everybody comfortable. Gently comfortable with smart sheet before we rip the Band-Aid off the new ERP system. Phase two is gonna be these big, these larger forms here. Okay, phase two, I, I build. That spreadsheet, I have everybody go in and populate their, um. Budget requests. For, including any new requests are in there, um, for budget review and the preliminary budget. Um, I included. Also just a section of the comments sheet so you can see how, how we dynamically work within there and. Um, loading that information or tagging a director or elected official of, um. How'd you come up with this here? Like, what, can you explain this a little bit further there? I didn't print all of them for you. We'll get into that. This is just a visual aid. Preparing you for preliminary.
But it's important to note that any changes, any dialogue, any discussion. System captures. So nothing is done even laterally or arbitrarily.
I could go back to a timestamp of when something's been adjusted and changed in there. While we're in workshops, I create a new column. Um, that's labeled workshops. So any changes that are made during workshops by the board. I make that in the workshop column, not the original present, presented budget from the directors or the electeds. So that way it's a visual, we're not overriding anything they originally submitted. And I'm able to document exactly what was changed when, um, and what it was changed from. Because the, it never fails, we get, we do this in June and July, August. And, you know, June, July, August of the next year, hey, didn't I have this in there? Well, you did, but during this discussion, you remember that it, you know, it either went up, it went down, whatever the case may be. So, so it's documented because I cannot remember that a year later. Um, there's a revenue side, there's an expense side. So we do those separately.
Well, a lot of this is done way before you even give the commissioners a preliminary budget.
Oh, it, it is all done before. Preliminary budgets will be presented to the commissioners before September third. Um, and this is all started in July.
So there's a lot of, yeah, corrections, a lot of work.
There is. Yes, because I'll go through. Like I said, each, each elected official and director is responsible for their own budget, their own budget submissions from the beginning base of it. Any new requests, um, sometimes there, we're all human, there's entry errors. Um, the biggest one is entering revenues as a positive number instead of a negative number. Having to go, and that'll skew the entire budget. So going in, finding those, making those corrections for them. Um, helping them balance their budget because they're supposed to be presenting a balanced, uh, a balanced budget. The revenues have to equal their expense. If they're outside of the general fund. So ensuring that they have that within there and grants that maybe they had carryover for, those sort of things are in there. It's just a lot of. Crossing Ts, dotting Is between myself and those electeds and directors.
And I think Jen's probably gonna cover, but to note to her, we'll be redundant if she does. That, uh, she said it starts in July, it actually never stops. The, the budget, the fiscal manager, the auditor, the treasurer, that it, it's a year round. So the departments. Uh, our offices may not start working on their next budget, though many of them do throughout the year. I don't wanna apply that. Uh, but they don't have to turn it in till summer, early fall and, you know, for the next year. Uh, there's a lot of analysis that goes on and, and, uh, work that goes on behind the scenes every month of the year.
It's very true. Any of my, my planning and analysis of that heavy load for the next year is done during this time along with that budget. Presentation book, um, for the newly adopted budget happens in this. In this time, right before we really get started in, into the next year. The treasurer, the auditor, the auditor and myself are always working in three fiscal years at all times. Um, and next. Oh, oh, some, a role that I've taken on of it, training and communication. So training with the annual budget. Communicating with directors and electeds regarding the financial wellness of the county, um, I've designed. Templates, um, for budget management with. For the directors, elected officials to utilize as well as build templates for, um. Getting really transitioning from paper into electronic and the ability to, to track and have audit tracking for supplemental. And transfer requests, um, as well as building templates for grant management. If any director or elected needs help in that area, I have templates out there, um, so.
Also, it's interesting to note that. She talks about the elections and the directors, of course, are the primary, but the budget group is, I don't know, how big is, how many emails are on the budget group?
Fifty.
So there's fifty people that are constantly working on the budgets in different offices and in different, uh. Departments and they do it, they do it a little bit differently, but, but it's all fifty people that are, you know, gathering this information and, and, and. Dealing with all of this.
Cause each office or department has their own, um, budget staff person as well, the, assists them. So, yeah, there's at least fifty. So you'll see the handout here, that was my slide deck from training, um. And I didn't provide the lease to you, but it gives you an idea of some of the things that we discuss. Uh, I provided the template, um, there is. This is just budget management. So because we don't utilize our system as an actual accounts payable system, um, there's. We don't utilize the purchase order. So, um, I know IT specifically because I. I have my hands in that department, um, they have built a purchase order system through smart sheets that I've kind of taken. And, you know, something from them and it allows directors to be able to approve any requests within their department. Utilizing this and then translating it to the budget tracker as well as those, those departments that have to manage their. If they have a fund, they have to manage not only their revenue budget, their expense budget, they also have to manage their cash flow. So. I built this tracker, um. To be able to reconcile to cash as well, so that they're keeping track of all of that and nothing gets, gets missed. Then there's a copy there for you, just the template for the grant management. There's a dashboard for a director to easily access and see where that grant is at. Um, rollups, rollup reports, again, a very similar purchase order requisition. For approval and tracking sheets in there. So you have an idea of what's out there and available to them. Uh. Well, let's see, financial analysis, I don't have any handouts for that because most of you, you've seen those analysis before, um. I, I do cash flow analysis for some funds, um, specifically the general fund and cumulative reserve. Um, those are the ones I focus on. I don't focus on countywide. Each department who has cash, they should be doing their own cash flow forecasting. Um, and if they need assistance, I'm always, I'm always a phone call or instant message away. Um, I provide the quarterly reports to the board, multi-year forecasting, um, analytical rese- research and cost analysis. Um, or any type of specialized reports, the majority of the board has asked me to do. Um. Additionally to that. Grant and award management, um, and reporting. Rob's handing out a draft policy that I was asked to prepare. Um, and present to the board in regards to grant management. That was done in this time in twenty twenty-three. Um, the board at the time chose to not go forward with that policy, but understand that the work is already done. It's there, um. If the board would like to start. Going down that path again, um.
So where that started was we were trying to find a way. When Jen first got hired, working with the other members of the fiscal team. It wasn't uncommon for a director to come to the commissioners on a Tuesday and say, this grant's due Friday, I need you to approve it. You had no idea what was in, you had no idea what the hooks were, you had no idea what the cost was. I mean, directors. Give you that information, but then you'd have to sign it that same day or, or risk losing the grant. So the goal wasn't, is to back that train up. As far as possible, it's not always possible. Sometimes it turn around, the solid waste grant came out like a month and a half before we get to filing. So, uh, sometimes it's not possible, but generally it's possible. You give the commissioners at least a week or two. To ask questions, think about it, look at the budget impact. And then make a thoughtful, educated decision. That's kind of the basis for this was to have a. Multi-disciplinary team that could look at it from all different perspectives. HR, finance, um, and help the director and the elected. Uh, not stop the elected or the director, but provide them as much information to give to you as possible.
As well as, um, assist the director in analyzing the grant too. A lot of time, uh, we have some departments that, um. Are grant-heavy, they do it year after year, they are great at managing their grants, but we have grants that come through. We're trying to find opportunities to really bolster some revenue in some areas or in programs where. That director has never seen a grant before, never, that's not an experience that they have. So to, to assist them through rubric, to be able to analyze that grant, um. And how mu- cause no, no grants is free. Okay, so how much is it really gonna cost the county in the end? Um.
Sometimes we don't think about other, other organizations on the word of, we'll get a small grant. Uh, they'll spend the money in a matter of weeks and then have to report on it for two or three years. Because of the federal or state requirements on the grant, you know, so it, it. There's a lot of layers that sometimes if they don't deal with it all the time, they don't know.
So, one question on grants. You see time to time where positions are higher due to grant funding. We track all those. So when the grant funding goes away, what happens with the position?
So I'll speak to the, the policy that's in front of you, the draft policy in front of you. That was the point of having HR on that committee.
Yes.
Um, to be able to track that. Now, I don't know if HR currently tracks that or if it's up to the directors to track that and notify the board of when the grant funding.
Yeah, I'm just asking because that's, that could be a big one because it's.
It is a big.
Find the money for the position, so they find it. That's really fine as long as the position, well, that's like our critical. Area artists, whatever, we hire somebody for grant funds and then when the funds are gone. But that's a subject we should. Whether that position.
Well, we, we always, we always think it's important to. They should know when they're hired, this is a grant-funded position and the money's in one, two, three, whatever it is. So they are caught off guard.
Yes.
It's just the discipline needs to be on our side because it's human nature and I've seen it for a long time, not just here. Probably gonna get calls after this, you know, is by the time the grant runs out, that person is a part of that department or office. They are a part of the county. And it's like, well, we can't, we just can't imagine not having so-and-so and, and I understand that.
But that's fair to have that discussion at that time and not just forget about.
Assume, right.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just having a singular file saying, oh, we need one dirt budget, we need to discuss this. And then ultimately. You can continue to fund anything you wanna continue to fund, um, that's ultimately your decision.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm just curious.
So in addition to that grant, that draft policy, I also manage, um. A handful of grants or awards, uh, I manage the coronavirus relive, coronavirus relief fund. Uh, American Rescue Plans, state and local fiscal recovery funds, it's still being managed at this point in time. American Rescue Plans, local tribal inconsistency funds, those are still being managed at this point in time. And the opioid settlement awards, um, cooperatively with Erin Quinn. Um. And, and that just happened. I don't. I'm not sure how that landed in my lap other than it tends to just be, it was. The federal government handing out money left and right and, um, what do we do with this? And we needed some strategic planning on how we were gonna spend that funding and it was countywide. So it, it really just landed on my desk at that point in time.
I'm hoping we'll take care of that.
The smaller counties that your position won there, where, where was that?
The auditor's office lately.
Yeah.
And, and during that time during COVID as well, I mean, the auditor's office, um. It wasn't, Heather was the chief deputy, but they had some turnover. They didn't have a senior accountant at that point in time either. And so. If I remember right.
But we have the annual audit, so things have to be accounted for.
Yeah.
So it's a.
It was a heavy burden and it was a lot. I mean, there was, there were a point in time where I was sitting in my office watching live feed from the Senate floor. To see what bills were being adopted because it was all happening that fast and that in, in time. Um, type of transactions and it was all changing every day. So we'd get, we'd get information of, okay, this is acceptable. Um, expenditures, um, on Monday and then on Tuesday, never mind, we changed our mind. That's not acceptable anymore and we want you to do this.
And the federal government is notorious and they're doing it now. They'll claw back money. They'll, they'll flood the, they'll flood the problem with federal funds and then at some point they want it back.
Seen that with the hospital big time.
They're trying to.
There's some money.
Right now.
But now you need to pay it back.
It's what, it's what, it is exactly what's happening with the art of funding for sure. Um, moving on.
Yes.
I manage capital assets, well, to some degree. I facilitate, um, the collection of the capital asset inventory. It's actually a statute. Um, statutory requirement of the commissioners. So I facilitate that and deliver to the auditor. Um. They're currently in the, um, in the process of building a template to make that streamlined through smart sheets again. So that it is a collaborative approach and not a spreadsheet here, a spreadsheet there and then trying to enter, but. Um. On top of that, also within my, um, job description is, um, working with finance committee and, um, developing, reviewing, making recommendations. On financial policies and other financials. Issues related to the, um, or requested by the board. As well as assessing internal, um, issues or, um, ideas that, you know, over, to, over the past. Four or five years, the, the board has built April hulls. Well, we ran that through, um. Finance committee on how do we make that work in the accounting system? So it sounds like a great idea, but how do we make that work? Within our accounting system, how does that get reported? What's the flow, the workflow within there?
So.
Yeah.
Let me interrupt this for a second. I wanna check in on time. Yeah, so maybe, yeah, cause we can, if, if we can go back to unfinished business, we can continue this another time if.
Yeah, why don't we continue it under time? Cause we have a very long day today.
So I think it's important in.
No, it's important to go through it. Uh. This, I, I know I'm wanting to follow up, we might not even get time on Thursday. The follow-up of some of the workshop items and one of them's budget and how do we wanna proceed with that. So very important with all of this. So very important with all of this. It seems like there's a lot of other demands on time.
We'd like to finish, but we'll do it at, I mean, we'd like to finish at a point in the future, when it's still kind of all in your mind, the the everything's just covered. Would that be at a workshop or whether it be unfinished business?
Yeah, we may have time in this afternoon, unfinished business. I would just like to try to get out of here by four in the day.
Is that okay with you, Jen?
Yeah, I I just have about three more. No, 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 I was just, you know, calling an audible, and I can go with it.
I just wanted to check, because I know sometimes you guys have meetings during your lunch hour and appointments, and I just wanted to check if you want to keep going, we'll keep going, but I didn't want to.
Yeah, so I want to give her a chance to, if if it's all right, to to wrap up quickly and then but if with with this large of a thing, it it would be good for me to brew through this and then and
Later this afternoon?
Oh, it can be, it can be whenever.
We may have time this afternoon. On unfinished business. How much more time you've got, Jen?
Probably fifteen minutes.
Yeah, we can finish that. I I just want to make sure staff has time to
Yeah, absolutely.
Get away from lunch.
And then your commissioner. Then you can go look at it, come back, and I'm sure there'll be questions that you go through.
And and that was the whole point of giving you
No, because I want to go back and read that.
I want you to take it home. I want you to process it. I, like I said, I have three, three points on just my role, the overview of what I do for the county and the board, as well as some accomplishments that we've achieved in this timeframe that I've been in this position, and then future goals. So which I think will align with your workshop. Because I think we are thinking the same thing.
Yes.
Pretty excited about that.
We are. I mean, I I think there's more discussion on process and make sure we're all in board on the process.
And I think that's a lot of what you're you've got in these handouts is the process.
And I have more handouts, but we'll we'll wait until if we
No, thank Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, second, step down second, Paul's better side. I, motion carries. Good afternoon, I'll call the afternoon meeting to order of January twenty-eighth of twenty-five. First item is roll call. President Lori. Excuse Lori for this meeting. President Todd, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes. My pledge is to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God in the distance.
Next item is the approval of the business agenda.
I've heard the
Our business agenda?
Sorry, business.
Yeah, just for the agenda day.
Heard the business agenda.
I'll step down second that. Any discussion? Air none, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is approval of the commissioner meeting minutes for the fourteenth and the twenty-first.
I move to approve the meeting minutes from January fourteenth, Tuesday, January fourteenth, and January twenty-first.
Okay, so I'll step down and second that. Any discussion on the meeting minutes? I guess I don't need to look to my left, so. All right, we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Ask people to provide public comment, if in person. Please come forward. If you're joining via Zoom, please raise your hand. And when called upon, please unmute yourself, and you have three minutes or less. All right.
Roger.
Roger online.
Hello there, and this is very strange to see the two newbies running the show. Appreciate that. I think you're having a good time, I can tell. I just want a couple of things. One is I tried to get access your agenda, and apparently you've subcontracted that for some new crazy subsystem. But I'm having a devil of a time figuring out how to access, in order to I can look at the agenda and find out what's on for this afternoon. So I wanted to let you know that that needs some work in terms of being able for ordinary folk to try to operate it. The other is, I wanted to know if there had been any movement or any update on the situation vis-à-vis the airport and the Dellsport Water District. And that's it for today. Good luck, gentlemen.
Yeah, kind of just touch base. I did hear from someone else yesterday that was having a hard time getting on that, and we will have staff reach out to you, Roger, on that issue. That's probably the best way to approach that with the, yeah, with the airport, with Lori not here, I think hopefully she can update on the airport when she's back. And with the water district, unless you you had anything, Ed?
No, I believe Thursday that's going to be on the agenda. We're going to be in workshops talking about airport.
Yes, she wants to follow up on the makeup and what's happening, not happening.
Yeah, since since Lori's been looking into some of that, and we've been collecting information from past contracts and so that we'll probably have an update on that on Thursday, Tuesday.
Yeah, next Tuesday, and hopefully that there's quite a bit going on between the water district and the airport. I appreciate you asking, Raj. Thank you. Anybody in the room like to speak? Not seeing anyone? Anyone else online would like to speak? Pat.
Hi, this is Pat Arnold from Trout Lake, and I have three things I want to comment on. I I listened to some of the morning session. And it inspires me to tell you that the Clickatet County staff, as you know, are absolutely wonderful, and that is one of the great things about living in this county is you call an office at the county and an actual person answers the phone, and they can solve your problem and they can provide the information you want, and I've been interacting with county staff now for thirty-something years, and they have never once disappointed, so whatever you can do to support them is great. I want to comment on the Clickatet. And yes, I'm standing here, had to drive down to White Salmon because I was trying to listen this morning with my very poor phone connection and kept getting dropped out of the meeting, so I decided if I was going to make a public comment, I had to get to someplace where there was better phone service. The Clickatet Mill Workshop that's happening on Thursday is of interest to quite a few people, including me, and it's another reason to to have those workshops on Zoom is because you get better value from those of us citizens and constituents if we can actually hear what's happening, and I just think that it's it's really important for people to be able to know what the considerations are. I've learned a lot over the last few years, listening to commissioners' meetings, and I think that it really makes for better public participation if we can be better informed. And the other thing, I had a question for you, I think I heard a bit of discussion about this this morning, but I can't really be sure, since like, as I say, I kept dropping off. Do we have any idea yet what the federal freeze on the grant disbursements, what that pause may do to us? I think that our, I'm under the impression that our grant for the solar advisory panel and the solar work and the planning is basically federal money on a state pass-through, but do we know? So those are my comments. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comments, Pat. Thanks for the comments on staff. As far as the federal freeze, no, since that's come down so quickly. What that means, I mean, time will tell, and then how long is the freeze going to be or not be? I I know we receive quite a bit, like I said, federal funding. And then state funding, which comes from federal funding. It's just a pass-through. I'm sure we will be working on that in the future.
Yeah, I I believe everyone is is talking about that, that's all the buzz, but too soon to tell. The the Clickatet Mill Workshop, that's Wednesday?
Thursday, Lori just wanted to talk about it. I I don't think we're going to spend a lot of time on it. Just some different proposals that's going on. I don't, I I was hoping we could go back and refocus around our goals that we talked about and what our staff. And it seems like to be a lot of more needs than what we have for two and a half hours on Thursday. Hopefully, coming up, we can spend a lot more time on it, but I don't foresee a lot of discussion. I think she just wanted to bring up what her involvement's been, what she's working on.
Yeah, so to to follow up with you, Pat, the a lot of those community workshops and things, I'm I'm sure will be zoomed and will be seeking all participation, you know, online and everything. The the some some of the initial, some some of the workshops that we're talking about is just for us to communicate and and rough out some ideas and and then
Then bring them forward.
And then bring, yeah, so we'll we'll have way more zoomed and online opportunities, but we wanted to try and condense it for the community on on Tuesday, so we can say here's, here's the ideas that, you know, and 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 not, because I had a hard time going to every single meeting, and then I found on a Tuesday so little was talked about, so we want to make sure that all the public gets all the information, so.
No, appreciate the comment. Did we lose someone?
Uh, of course, Jean, but Rick is is next in line.
Okay, Rick.
Yeah, good, good afternoon. Yeah, I'm so used to saying good morning when I do this kind of stuff. Yeah, I did that a couple of quick things. I was hoping Lori would be there, because I want to discuss some public records, but what what I was thinking about, because I can never remember the rocks that fall on eighty-four, whether that's county or state, because this year seems we're having another big issue with the rocks around Courtney Road. I think it was two weeks ago, there were giant boulders that came across. Now that work that was done a couple of years back, that was really good work, but it was kind of in the wrong spot. It's a little more towards the east that all the rocks seem to come down on. I was wondering if there's any plans to take care of that. The spot up by the rest area, you know, that that one's real nice. Then, you know, I was I had I had said late last year that I was going to write the FAA and, you know, ask them about when Lori broke confidentiality. And, you know, I finally got that out, and you know, I I asked them to not punish the whole county, but to rather, you know, just go after her. Because that was, I I just hope they don't punish the whole county for that, but like I said, the major part was those rocks, and I'm just wondering if you guys have any plans for that. All right, that's all I got. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, Rick. I'm assuming you're talking about highway.
Old highway eight is a big
Old highway.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that old highway is county. The other highway, fourteen?
Highway fourteen.
Is state.
Yeah, fourteen.
Yeah, which I assume that's what you're talking about, the state and their rock.
Right, yeah, I didn't know who took care of the mountain, was or was the state's going to take care of the mountain, moving it back, or whether it was county was going to do that?
I don't, I don't know from from my my current job, but I know that that's been right, highway fourteen, that's a continued issue, and small improvements along different sections keep being made, so I don't know of a project coming up to actually do that to that section by Courtney.
Yeah, I I don't, I don't know, but thanks for your comments.
Okay, now Jean is back.
Jean's back.
I'm back.
You're good.
Good afternoon. And I apologize, I'm not in a great with a place with great service, so if it cuts out, I'll just go ahead and email this to you, so I appreciate I appreciate the time. Good morning, Clickatet County Commissioners and valued staff. My name is Jean, and I'm representing the Clickatet County Concerned Citizens. We're a group committed to fostering informed dialogue and supporting solutions to challenges facing our county. Today, we bring before you a matter with serious implications for the safety, trust, and well-being of our entire community. Clickatet County Sheriff Bob Songer recently made public comments that implied his intentions to be directly involved in federal immigration operations. And we respectfully urge the county commissioners to consider that a county-level law enforcement leaders offered to assist in federal immigration operations poses two key risks. Diverting critical resources from local law enforcement's core duties and conflicting with Washington State's sanctuary laws, potentially undermining legal protections. Now, Washington State's, Washington's immigrant protection laws serve several crucial purposes. Separation of responsibilities, that is, immigration enforcement is clearly a federal responsibility. It prevents overreach in that local law enforcement is tasked with addressing criminal justice concerns, not civil matters related to immigration status. And the protection of community trust, where local law enforcement is charged with building trust and public safety for all community members. And also, it's important to recognize that immigrant status is not equivalent to criminality. By mixing the two, we risk targeting individuals solely based on their status with a potential for dangerous actions such as racial profiling and discrimination, undermining both community safety and public trust. Now, Washington State Sanctuary laws are designed to ensure a framework in which our community can thrive. These laws are not optional and cannot be selectively ignored based on individual preferences or personal opinions. While law enforcement may need to cooperate on judicially processed immigration matters, unchecked involvement can lead to profiling, discrimination, and a breakdown of trust throughout our county. For these reasons, the Clickatet County Concerned Citizens respectfully call on the county and state leaders to ensure that vital county resources are not used in ways that conflict with Washington State Sanctuary laws. Steadfast support of immigration protections will strengthen the foundation of government that serves every person in Clickatet County without exception. Now, for your information, the R C W that covers immigration and citizenship status for law enforcement agency restrictions is R C W one zero dot nine three dot one six zero. I thank you for your time, and I will go ahead and send you the email with with the statement and our reference research. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Jean. You sent that to us, we can forward that to the sheriff. Anyone else would like to speak in the room?
I have two six six two.
Okay, two six six two.
Yes, good, good afternoon. I almost said good morning, commissioners. This is Tracy McKeon from Lisle, Washington. And I also am having trouble with your getting the agenda off your Civic, I think it's called Civic something or another that you've gone to. I'm not a fan of 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 signing up for different sites such as that one, because a lot of times you'll get a lot of spam. And so I like the old way of getting the agendas, where we could just go to the website and download it ourselves without a intermediate interim person in there, such as Civic Plus. So if you could let me know how I could get the agenda, that would be great. And then also, I'd like to again request that the commissioners have a a town hall-style meeting every three months, one meeting every three months, four times a year. And I haven't heard if you guys would be willing to do that, but that would be great if you are. And then I'd also like to discuss what I would call a core weakness in Clickatet County. So I've been listening to the meetings for over three years now, and one thing that I believe would be that can be fixed, but should be addressed, is is getting information out to the residents of Clickatet County. So Jeff King, he does an update with emergency management. He provides the board a written document that is his update, and he also has it on the agendas. When Scott Edelman with planning gives the board during the public meeting his update, it is not disclosed to the public, and it is not part of the agenda, and I believe that it would be a great strength of a core weakness if that was available to the public when the commissioners get the information. This way, the residents, the community can look at at if they're willing At if they're willing to look at the agenda and look at the document. They are able to see at the same time the Commissioners are different things going on in the in the in the county. And they can research it and respond accordingly with the information that you guys have. And the other thing is, is I'm hoping that the Commissioners will ask that Lori Anderson. That she. Oh, Lori Zoller, I'm sorry, that she gives a. A update for the airport at every. Commissioner meeting. It's a lot of money going out and I think that an update would be well spent. And the last thing is there's an EMS meeting tomorrow, the twenty ninth at three o'clock at the. Rule seven fire district on Brooks Drive. And I would suggest that you Commissioners, one of you at least attend the meeting. And find out what's going on with the EMS district. I will forward you an email that I have sent the other Commissioners. On the pay raises, they've given themselves twenty-nine percent pay raises since the approval of the levy. And I'll get that to you. And thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you for reaching out. It's like I've always said, every solution creates problems. So.
So with.
Lisa, yeah.
Jen Neil is going to be giving us an update during unfinished business. She's also gonna go through how to access the software.
We'll do that later.
Yeah, everybody could stay tuned.
So stay tuned.
So walk you through it.
Thank you.
Gabrielle Gilbert.
Gabrielle.
Thank you so much. First of all, Jean's comments were excellent and I hope that the board also stretches out into what used to be. ICE NOT or the Immigration Office officers not coming into schools, churches, or hospitals. That has been removed and that needs to have clarification in our community. So that those entities are safe. I also want to say that Ashley Gaffney's SWATCH presentation was excellent. Can the board please explain steps the boards will take with the Director of the Correctional. Clickitack County Jail to sign up for the Medicaid transformative project and the reentry initiative that provides. Pre-release services for individuals leaving incarceration such as case management, medication, and alcohol. Opiate use disorder. Program begin July first, twenty twenty-five, and I think it's a pair that the county. Part of that program. I also want to say that when you're in discussions and workshops to have. The goals be childcare as economic development and how you're going to address that in this calendar year. I'd also like to say that Todd Jacobson's Fish and Wildlife presentation was important and informative. And that the poachers that killed the three wolves in Clickitack County were misguided in their criminality. As there was zero kills in livestock or domestic animals recorded and we are forever. On the airwaves. And the newspaper as the county that took out. Really in state protected ones such as the three wolves and the fourth wolf that is missing and presumed dead. And we are top of that suspect list. And I also understand that Lori's here, but I want to congratulate her on standing up as a leader. And shutting down the appalling smear campaign, in my opinion, and the slander allegedly that she had to endure over the last few months. Is actually. Feel like. Not solicitably criminals, not feel like Christmas miracle, but peace on earth. And I, and I said what he endured over the months was appalling and. Her leadership capabilities are outstanding and I'm just really happy that she was able to shut that down. So I look forward to hearing the board's commentary and. How we're moving forward on some of these things. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I guess, yeah, the SWATCH. Thing that Aaron put on, that was a sound like a great program that is moving forward. And Todd Jacobson always does a great job with his presentations and I'll be following up with him. On that further. So.
Yeah, and I'm hoping on economic development. We're gonna learn more this evening at KCPA meetings starting at six. Probably run into eight or nine o'clock this evening. So just FYI. Lisa.
Okay, good afternoon, County Commissioners. And it's fun to see some new faces up there. Congratulations and we look forward to the next couple of years. I agree with Pat Arnold that we do have a great county and that they always answer the phone and are very helpful. And essentially, that's what my comment is about, is to hopefully help with something that continues to be an issue in the county and that is short-term rentals. Just really in brief, actually, the history of short-term rentals goes back hundreds of years. As our nation was being settled, you know, people would open their homes to travelers that were, you know, going across our nation or helping to develop our nation. People would open their homes to those travelers and those workers for, you know, a night, a few nights, and they would provide them shelter. And food in exchange for money. And so actually, that empowered women for many years. Women that, you know, were traditionally staying at home. Were able to create an income. They were able to contribute to household income by being part of opening their home and. Essentially providing hospitality. So hospitality has been around since the beginning of time. And then, but over time, what happened, right? This became more formal. It became. More formal in the sense of bed and breakfast and hotels. And then that took that financial ability or that ability to earn money away from many women and for many homes. So it's been super fun to see in this age of technology that these platforms have come back. That are allowing for, you know, short-term rentals, medium, long-term rentals. And that's open to everybody. It's empowering anyone who's trying to pay their bills, pay their insurance, pay their mortgage. So on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, the last Board of County Commissioners had a meeting. They had talked about an ordinance. It contained the four basics, which I've seen in a lot of ordinances, which is code compliance, basic assurances of safety. Good neighbor guidelines and a complaint reporting process. I mean, this is not only important for guests, this is important for homeowners in Clickitack County. That should be basic for everyone in this county. It was brought up in that meeting, though. That that if the government is found to be one percent liable in some kind of incident, they would be considered a hundred percent liable. So what I would just like to recommend is RCW Chapter sixty-four point three seven covers all four of those areas. The Board of County Commissioners could make a formal statement that simply states Clickitack County's ordinance is. Is that it's in alignment with the current RCWs. Just remember, the more you write yourselves in to be involved, the more you are involved. So let's keep it simple. Thank you.
I need to wait for the music to. No, I appreciate Lisa because it is one of the six items that we put on in our workshop that we do. We would like to approach this year. We need to go back and surround that and have some discussions on that. And I'm hoping we'll be reaching out and asking for opinions on that.
Yeah, no, that's great. No, we'll look at that RCW because I do believe. The more the county involves themselves in people's personal property rights. Potentially creates more of a problem than a solution and that those things are kind of neighbor to neighbor. And I wanted to follow back up to Tracy McKeon. She mentioned the town halls. We didn't cover that. There. That is one of our major discussions to have several town halls and we're kind of gathering all that stuff before we go on the road, I guess. So, Steve.
You know, thank you. There anybody else? Hey, not hearing anyone from in the meeting. Or online. Then we'll close this portion of the comment. I thank everybody for commenting. I always like that statement, every solution creates a problem. I mean, even, you know, you talk about short-term rentals, depending how far you go. Create problems. It's. So hopefully with this new system, we can. Answer that to the public because like I said, nine o'clock last night, I received a phone call that somebody couldn't get on and. See our agenda. They were having problems with that, so. It's not quite one thirty. We've got a couple of minutes. We have a public meeting at one thirty. Actually. Well, just, we can, I can move payroll warrants. The payments up.
Do we know, is, do we know anyone that's going to the EMS meeting?
I can. I'd be happy to. I said I wanted to start getting involved with some of that. I'll reach out and talk to Tony Brown.
Yeah, I don't know from, yeah, I mean, Frank's probably going.
Yeah, he has. Tight up in the morning, but I. We've got thirty seconds left.
Do you like me to fill thirty seconds?
Yeah, I have thirty seconds before we start the public meeting.
Tracy McKeon brought up. Tracy McKeon brought up how I don't do a written report. And I think if you listen closely to the, to the recording, I think she called me a core weakness of the county. And no, I think she's referring to that I don't do written reports. I'd be very open to doing written reports, but I did though, since it's every two weeks. I've been preparing a written report one week, delivering, preparing, delivering. So if I have been wanting to bring up to the board, and this isn't necessarily short term, but. Looking at going to one time a month reports, I could be able to do a much more robust report and give a written report in advance easily. If I'm doing it every two weeks, it does make it tougher to have relevant written information for you.
We can have that discussion because most, everything staff hands to us, they go through it line item by line item verbally. If we're missing that, then I think that's a different issue. So anyhow, it's one thirty. I will call a public meeting. To order, to request the extension of Short Plat SPL twenty-two dash twenty-one applicant. Smith. And Short Plat SPL. Twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four applicant. Schroder.
Good afternoon. I'm Scott Edelman filling in for Rachel today. Sorry, Rebecca. Get the Rs mixed up. She's out. Both of these are short plats that went through their first year after approval. They were given, granted their one-year extension staff can offer. After that, staff can't provide any more extensions, ask to go to the board. Both of these applicants have been diligently moving forward, working regularly, staff contact is great. They've both been held up by the same issue, which is trying to get their drainage plan. Engineers are very busy. So the engineer will provide the drainage plan, reviewed by Public Works. Public Works is very busy, has to give comments back and sometimes there's some back and forth. So both of these are held up because of that. Staff is very supportive of grant proposing a continuation. And a further extension if you're up for it. It's, I think, good for the applicant, saves them money and time and saves staff time as well from having to just go back and redo everything.
Yeah, and I think the, the, the Sams is, that one's thirty-four point something acres. And the zoning there is five acre. Minimum.
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
And the second one, I didn't see or can't recall what.
They're larger.
It's larger.
Yeah. Yeah, the shorter one is larger zoning. I believe twenty acres only in that area.
And the short plat that, that. Those. That then meet, it'd be larger than twenty acres?
Yeah, certainly, there's no issue with them meeting the planning standards. It's just a matter of meeting the content. They received their tentative approval. Preliminary approval, so they met all planning standards. Now they're having to go through and do their drainage plan. And driveway approaches, different things like that, yeah. All the requirements of the preliminary plat before we can sign and approve a final plat. We're in the freeze right now, so they're not hold anyway.
So question. Like I said, they apply. They have a year. Then they can get a year extension. Administrative. Then it needs to come to the board for another year extension. Is that the end of the extensions and they have to go back and reapply for the process?
There's not.
After the year.
There's not, you could grant another extension. That's why we were proposing the extension to go not quite a year, but I think into November next year, just ahead of the freeze. Because that way they'd be on track to, because once the freeze is in, they can't get a final plat anyway. And so that would be a bit on track if they don't get through this November, we would come to you. If they're still progressing regularly, keep in good contact with another request to the extent. Until the point of the next, I guess.
With our approval, then can you give another one-year extension administratively?
We can't. We'd have to come back to you again.
Yeah, that's why I was trying to make sure I understood it. Only the board can approve. Or they even have a right to go back and start over.
Yeah, they certainly could have.
Which isn't the best result, I don't think. More paperwork, we are proceeding where they're at today. Okay.
And I don't think either of these is very far away from completing. I think they've just got that. The drainage plan is their one outstanding element, one significant element.
Yeah. That's the big one I see because they're waiting on a third party to give them reason.
No, no issues there.
Nope.
Is this separate? Do we make a motion?
Why don't we take them separately? If that'd be okay, if you're on board with that. You want to do. Short Plat SPL. Twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one. Sam Smith.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve Short Plat SPL twenty twenty-two. Through twenty-one, Sam Smith.
I'll step down and just clarify, that's an extension. Or the short plat. Any discussion? No discussion, we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next one, short. Flat.
I make a motion to approve Short Plat SPL twenty twenty-two through twenty-four, Dennis Schroder, to extend that.
Okay, I'll step down in second. Any discussion? Aaron, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And before I close this public meeting, I want to compliment Rebecca and compliment you. I had one of the. Applicants. Called me up and say he was very impressed with the communication from planning.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Talking about the process and walking them through the process. He didn't know once he asked for it. What was gonna happen, how long it was gonna take and I'm just saying I appreciate you guys reaching out and communicating. Because a lot of people send an email even to the board and like. I haven't heard from you.
I appreciate that. I'll pass it on to her.
Yeah.
Yeah, now pass that on to your whole staff because you guys take a lot of the arrows for the county. You. I don't think you get the kudos and the compliments when things go well. You only see the negative side because. If everything goes just fine. As it's supposed to be, that's, people expect that. And so. You, but you're definitely the face of the county where. Where problems lie, so.
Well, thank you.
Apologize for that. I appreciate it.
No, no, I appreciate you. I think you're, you're in the same boat. And, you know, we can do it partly because we have so much great support from other departments as well. It's a good place to work.
Well, thank you, Scott. Is there a motion to close this public meeting?
Motion to close public meeting?
Second, I'll step down second. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item. Consent agenda. A through I. A through I.
Like there's no.
Nine items? Is there a motion? To pass the consent agenda?
I had some discussion, so do I need uh?
Yeah, if you'd like to move on at all second, and then if we want to move something out.
So I I moved to uh approve the consent agenda?
I'll step down second, open for discussion. Because I have one item, I'm gonna talk about two here.
I wanted to discuss. A.
And that's where.
The amendment of the local solid waste financial assistance agreement. The ecology for twenty twenty-three through twenty-five.
That's where some of the money. Was changing from different sources.
Let me look.
Yeah. Computers, I love them. Uh while I'm looking that, uh item G says click it at county flood damage prevention ordinance. That's actually, yeah, to set for a public meeting for February fourth at one. Uh just to clarify that item, because that's very important if we're calling for a public meeting, the public needs.
There is.
To be aware of that.
Would you, would you review that?
Item G, under click that county flood damage prevention ordinance, that's for a public meeting. February fourth at one thirty P M. I just want to make sure I clarified that for the public. Because that was just kind of a short version on there.
Good.
Item G, um item A.
So like, um.
Yeah.
McKenzie isn't back yet, so I think I can explain, the amendment is. It's a two-year funding, and if we're not gonna spend all of the money. It was awarded to us, they redistributed to other counties that have. Uh needs that either weren't funded or have come up during the two-year cycle. So this is reallocating some of the money, moving it around, and then whatever is gonna go back to the state, I believe that's what it's for.
She kind of touched base on.
Yeah.
This one.
Our goal is not to send it back in the future, so.
Right.
Spend it all on again, but we can't use it, somebody else can use, that's the idea.
No, great, thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, it looked like it was all, it was all going into a lot of uh recycling waste. Yeah, then we reallocate too, since it's our opportunity to move things around internally between goals. So we have, funding is based on goals in certain areas like recycling, that kind of stuff, and if we need to move some of that. Put it there.
And we're basically at the end of that, by any of them.
Yes, yeah, the.
It's usually when you see where you're at.
I think it's June thirtieth, it's.
Yeah.
It's in February, we'll submit the new two-year. So.
Well, thank you.
That clarifies mine.
Yep. Clarified mine.
Yes, alright.
Thank you.
Vote on the motion? Okay, we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Payroll warrant certification and payment approvals. And by the way, you're doing an excellent job today.
Thank you. Always got me on the job training. I guess I can, uh I moved to approve the payroll warrants certifications. Even approvals?
In the amount of.
I moved to approve accounts payable warrants in the amount of eight hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine and twenty-three cents. And payroll benefit warrants in the amount of zero for the date ending January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Great, I'll step down second that, open for discussion. None? Here, no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I I move to approve accounts payable warrants in the amount of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and twelve and eight cents. And the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of. One million two hundred and three thousand three hundred and forty-nine and seventy cents, the date ending January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll step down second that. Any discussion? Here, no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item is new business. Weed. Control. Thought you were hiding in the weeds. We gotta have some humor, I mean, things up here have been too tense for too many years. See, some people didn't quite get it, see?
Since I've never done this, we're basically. Um I guess we are supposed to come before the board to get a verbal approval to hire a temporary. Uh seasonal employee for the summer to help us control some of these weeds, so we don't have to hide them anymore. That's what we, we are here to do, um it is in our budget, it has been reported in our budget, and we have the. Funding already, and it's already. Right there, so. We're here for your approval to.
Yeah, we just want to see your pretty faces.
No, I, yeah, no, I read what you have, it seems like more that you have a board that. Pretty much controls that. And uh but it's one hiring personnel. Do. This is probably new to me, do we need a motion for that? We do just need our consensus. Did you, any, any issue, Scott?
No, what uh, what? Where, where, where is that going? What's, what's the problem issues? What are you guys working on now? Mostly.
It's just to help us fulfill our contracts, I'm not able to fully fulfill all the contracts we have with our, with the government agencies that we. We have, and with the forest fires up in the Giver Pinocces. Last year, they're increasing our contracts that they want us to do to. Control the noxious weeds on all the gravel they put down, then the Army Corps of Engineers is asking more of us along the river. Down through there, um. And then we're just getting more, as more people move in, we're getting more complaints about weeds. And the ranchers are wanting more. Control along the road sides with rush skeleton weed and other issues, and it's just more than I can handle on my own.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I don't think this was uncommon hiring summer help in the past.
It, it hasn't been.
Yeah, I, I thought it was pretty normal, I mean, it was years ago, it was pretty normal that needed. Especially during the season, the busy.
It sort of went out of the budget, now it's back into the budget, so. Hopefully we'll be doing it every year, and hopefully we'll find a person that will come on every year, but we'll see what happens.
Yeah.
Great. I don't see a problem.
Verbal approval for me.
Go for it and do good. Come out of the weeds every now and then.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, so sorry.
No, I know, I, I, I really liked.
Thank you, have a good day.
They didn't just laugh at the joke, I'm catching on.
Well. When they laugh at my jokes, I like it. Okay, next item of business. Is discussion of the Swatch managing. Opioid, so, funds, this is, this follow-up from last week's meeting. Personally.
Aaron should be here anytime.
Yeah, not, not a problem. We're moving right along here, so.
I'm here if you want to continue on, uh it's a matter with Aaron and I.
Honestly, we talked about it last week, and I think it's good. If they're willing to do it for a ten percent administrative fee, this. This is a simple decision, in my opinion. Nothing to kick down the road.
So I think at this point, we would just need a motion to um go forward and pursue a contract.
Yeah, I, I, I hate to have Aaron take time out to get on when we talked about it. I, I didn't see in the opposition last week, because one four. If you support a motion to have them move forward, get a contract, have the P A review it, and bring it back to the board. Or find a little group.
I do, I'm just looking forward.
Here she comes.
Yeah, we could visit with Aaron. We're just moving fast today. No, we kind of had a discussion, and we kind of seen her being pretty supportive after our discussion last week, and moving this forward, and. Basically having you go forth and get a contract. Have the P A review it.
Uh I, would that go through your office, because it's a contract with you? Or does it go through my office?
That's a good question.
So it's probably just a verbal from us for her to get a contract, and then it comes to approve, right?
Yes.
So technically, be, these opioid dollars are not necessarily, there's no home managing them, right? It's just that Aaron and I have picked up. Um the pieces here to try and help it stay moving forward.
I, it sounds like this has been some time to in discussion.
Yes.
I can just make an assumption, every contract we do has. P A needs to do the review.
Yeah, and it will be with the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay.
So do you want me to just coordinate that then? But it's still gonna go through your office, I will coordinate the contract?
Yes.
Okay.
Through us.
I can make that happen.
Right. Any, any further comments?
Um, thank you.
You may have thought of since we discussed it last.
I did not, I just really appreciate you making a decision.
Contract is just to, for them to help manage it. We'll, we'll still be able to. Discuss with you and and talk with you if, if we think there's, you know, money's better served over here, over there, and then talking with parents and.
Um so I, I'm hopeful that one of you'll be on the council where they will have those discussions.
Yeah, on the result base.
Right.
I think that's where you and Brian last week.
Yes.
Result base.
Yes, and feel free to negotiate any. Portion of that contract too, as well, that is put forward before you don't have to sign the immediate, that's right in front of you, if, if there's things in there that you. Allow them on, and probably for, then negotiate those. Would it be better to have you look at a contract before I go through all the motions, make sure you're on board before we do all the approvals and? Like, if I bring you a contract that the P A's approved, and then you don't like it, then I have to do this again.
Go do it again, yeah.
So can I get you a contract first, you all can see if that meets what you want out of this, and then we can take it to them for approval, and then.
Excellent.
For you.
Good, good point.
No, and I, I would like, I, I, I come to this from a, from a, a place of caring, but, but ignorant, so I would. I would lean on you heavily and 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 just want to ask some questions and of how we can help make those dollars. Serve the most needs, so.
Yeah.
I think there's a lot, there is a lot of need, and I think they're gonna be really important moving forward, so. I want to get them out to the community.
Yeah, I think this is a great direction for this, but. Ten percent administrative fee.
You're, you're winning with that, very much so.
No, it's a good. Yeah, why don't we put the contract together and bring it back, review it, make sure we're all on board?
Yeah.
And then send it to the P A, and. Then we'll both. We just, actually, once we bring it back, we're all aboard, we'll put on the.
Is, is that pretty?
Agenda.
Is that pretty close? Is there kind of a contract already in the?
Yeah.
No.
Sorry.
Okay.
I didn't know I was gonna be doing this. Um do you want to just like circle back in like two weeks, and then I can have that drafted, and then we can. Talk about the draft, and then if you're fine with that. And I'll talk to Swatch too, so they're aware of the draft, make sure they don't have any big concerns, and then if you guys are fine with it, then we'll submit it to the P A, and then I'll let you all run with that.
Yes.
I will continue to be involved with the project, and then hopefully someone from your group will be as well.
I'll, I'll try and chime in in the next two weeks, because I haven't made it down there, I don't want to take up any of your time, and I know you're. You've taken on a much bigger role, and so I appreciate everything you're doing.
Yeah, shoot me an email and all.
I want to make sure you're, you're doing good.
And I'm.
That's the end of the role.
I appreciate you reaching out, or I've got another meeting set up.
Yeah, and I'm in White Salmon, so you can always stop by there too.
Alright.
Just Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays.
I, I almost popped in there yesterday.
So consensus, move forward.
Okay.
Great, dropped it, bring it back, we'll look at it. Then we'll send it to the P A, from our end, and then move on.
Great, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Right. There are miscellaneous reports.
So I'm putting a nail under unfinished business.
Oh, that's right. Unfinished.
So I will start with the public comments regarding the agenda, um I'd asked Elisa, she'd like me to. Um jump on and just walk people through, because I do this a lot um throughout the year with my updates, so. Let me just get. Jumped on here with screen share. Okay, for those of us who are accessing the agenda from the county website and the homepage. I'll go back to the home. We land here. Right here in the homepage. We have those news flashes and the Board of County Commissioners. Go ahead and click on that. It's in the same location as it once was, right there on the homepage. So today's. Remarked right here today. Click on that. It's gonna populate the packet, and it's going down the page too, because that's where I was. Um but. You can outline the packet, look at the packet, as outlined as it's always been, in the same exact format as it's always been. Um it shows the entire itinerary for the day. Um all the consent agenda items. You can also, what I found very helpful, was clicking on this meeting overview. So that takes the agenda, um puts it in these line items. And what I liked was that you can access, let's say, the Sheriff's Department update. Um right there. Instead of clicking into the agenda packet, and then going through filing. That whole big old, so it'll bring that whole thing up there. Um. And it's with every attached item. So prior minutes that are being voted on, um the short plat meetings. Um the consent agenda items, they are all right there with a hyperlink to click on them. You can also access all of those through the meeting files. Um right here on the side. And download all of those items by clicking that download button.
So, question I have, when do we download our agenda? Our new agenda onto this, what day is that?
It'll be posted on Thursday.
On Thursday, normally it'd be Thursday.
Thursday by the end of day.
Okay.
Well, I, I couldn't find it, maybe I didn't make a notation of it, someone was commenting on, they had to go to another website and sign up.
For notifications, if you want to be notified when we post a new agenda. You would, you can sign in.
So if you want emails.
To notify you that.
To notify you that it's been posted, then you need to go to a.
Yes.
That's the site to do that.
Yes.
But I think that's what confused people.
And is that a new?
Yes, it's a new, see right there where it says subscriptions? Through the bottom, right? You would have known, that's.
Okay, enter subscription.
Yeah.
Could people get notified before?
They'll just be notified when I.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying in the, in the past before.
If they signed up for the, for those alerts through the news flash alerts, yeah.
Oh, so, so that portion's the same.
It's a. Different.
Or.
It's a different platform doing the notification, but similarly, yes, so you would just click on that subscription, and then you would just. Hit that toggle switch. Sign you up for um any of those that you want to be notified for those. Agendas, okay?
Because there was somebody at the office asking, do I have to do that?
Yeah, and you don't.
The answer was no, you do not, if you don't want the notification. That you'd still.
You can still access it, yep.
Any further questions with, did that seem clear enough?
It'll take a little time for people to get used to.
It is getting used to it, but. I personally thought it was easier to just be able to go to this meeting overview, this is probably my favorite part, and not have to download the entire. Hundred-plus page packet and try and thumb through where that backup material was.
Yeah.
So also. I'm gonna say this in the news text, so they can. I'm gonna say this in the next six so we can. Probably next meeting, if they get on there, it will be live also off of that page. They can watch the video off of that.
So potentially.
That page?
Potentially right here, you would be able to wa, next week, you'd be able to watch today's video. From the mi, meeting. So it's just one location to get all of the information. Um, instead of multiple different areas and downloading massive reports. I remember, um, probably a year or two ago, there was a constituent where the, the packet was so large. They didn't have the space and, and there was a public comment related to um, not being able to download everything and have access to it. So, um, this eliminates that issue and I'm going to take up space on people's personal computers by downloading that.
Okay.
Hopefully it moves forward. I, I know it was just new for people and I heard, like I said, we seen it called late last night. Another person I seen come into the office and. And I had not went to it, so it's like I couldn't speak on it.
Right. Hold on, okay, let's see if I can actually get it out.
Thank you for doing that.
Absolutely.
Jim.
I am. First and open up here and sharing my screen, so it's, I have no problem. Um, so let's pick up where we left off.
No, no.
It's better, right? Okay, so I'm in Mary's. Okay, I think I left off. Um, some other roles that. I do for the county, I am a system administrator, so um. An administrator for Cai, Caiance's financial um, software. Providing oversight, training, coordination of updates um, with that financial software and process improvements. Um. I keep an eye on the G L entries um, to assist the auditor's office, um, mostly because I've been there a lot. Um, and just pulling reports on a daily basis and looking at things and um, at this point in time, um. What a prior um, CFO used to say, my sniff, sniff check is pretty in line with. Some things of the county, so I'm able to pick things out without really having to dive into it. Um. I'm also the county administrator for all of our. State and federal agencies, SAM's registration. Newly found out a few months ago, grants.gov, um. FEMA, PAGE, all of those administrations, they all talk to each other via A I. Um. Grants.gov is gonna need to, we'll, we'll have to circle back on that a little bit, um. As McKenzie was the, the test subject in that one and that recent federal grant regarding horse beef. Um, I actually had to sign that application um, to submit for that, so I'd, I think we need to circle back. And make sure that there are resolutions drafted. The board had given verbal approval to go ahead and do that, but. Um, that our processes and our resolutions line up with the ability to have be signed for other departments or the per, you know. I think the auditor is another administrator, it's just the two of us, so that t's are crossed, i's are dotted. I handle communication, um. Communication that from the board to other offices, communications with other uh, with stakeholders. Attend meetings and conferences in order to provide assistance to the board, um, develop and maintain the fiscal webpage. Prior to me, um. The budget document was the only thing loaded up into the website and it was loaded under the commissioner's agenda. Um. Now we have an entire finance dedicated webpage uh, where. All of our reports are there, um, interactive dashboards. I create interactive quarterly reports, um. And the supplemental reports so that the, the public can actually. Dive in to those reports, click on the charts and the graphs and they can see the data behind the charts and the graphs. If they're going through the website instead of just looking at the paper in front of them, which sometimes. Sometimes graphs are pretty clear, but sometimes you want to know what is that exact number behind there and that. That interactive site um, allows them to do that. It's my responsibility to craft, craft easy to understand reports for the public. That was a priority when I was hired. Um, to, to make finance digestible, government finance digestible, um. Which is something that I take classes on, I go to conferences for to try, and we all have the same problem. Government finance is not easy, um, and how do we, how do we um, explain property tax to the public, you know? I mean, that's. It's brutal. Um, budget book in your packet I handed out is a seven-page criteria guide for what the um. Budget presentation book, the final book that I spent this first part of the year um, building uh. Should look like. So there's criteria on, um. The table of context, contents, um, strategic goals and strategies from the board. Uh, priorities, issues, performance measures, all of those things. Um, what's a budget brief, you know, how that's outlined, um. And whatnot, so. Ultimately, the goal would be to get our budget book completely in line with the G F O A's standard. Um, to eventually submit for award for that. Uh, we are closer and the board has kicked off the one holdup that I've had. Already, we've already checked that off, um, and that would be setting priorities. So, thank you. Um, additionally, I am the Emergency Operations Center's Finance Section Chief. Um. Activated during any declaration of emergency, which. Also means that fire season is the same as budget season and I'm usually pretty pulled in two different directions, but, um. It depends on how big the fire is, so, um. I coordinate with stakeholders there. I started this, I started that role um, during COVID before I was in this position, but rolling into this position. Um, it made sense that I stayed in that role, um, as oversight for FEMA. Um, the administrator for FEMA and as well as F Mac and the coordination with stakeholders, we mayors and um, hospitals and. Um, other EMS entities during COVID, there was a lot going on and ensuring that we were able to. Um, recover as much funding as possible as a. Entire unit and team, all of the hospitals, all of the EMS, all, because when, when we have. A major emergency like that, it's not just county. It becomes city, fire district.
County wide.
It's county wide. So that coordination and providing those presentations to those stakeholders. On a regular basis during, during that process.
So. Are you the key person that tries to see if there's a? You know, a lot of times you have to meet a threshold in order for FEMA funding.
Yes. Um. I, let's see, the last one. I just make sure that the boxes are checked at this point in time. I haven't had it, a hand in in the, the winter emergency storm. Um, the way FEMA has changed their, their platform has made it. Ten times better or more, um, because it's all online based, so Jeff Hunter can load his projects in there. Emergency management can load their projects in there. The cities can load their projects in there under our one approved project. Um, and so I just make sure that as I get the emails through, um, I'm just managing it, facilitating, hey, did you get that signed? Hey, this did.
That's a lot simpler.
Oh, it, it is, for sure. Um, it is nice that they've gone through that, um, Public Assistance Portal. Created that, that came out during the COVID. It's, it's been improved since COVID, which is a lot more streamlined, but it had to be, it had to be put out there during COVID. Due to, you know, obvious reasons. Um. Next, I'm gonna jump into accomplishments and do guys a couple of packets. Yeah. Didn't have to get up anymore. You're too much. Okay, the, um. So when I came aboard as a fiscal manager, um. My predecessor had been advising the board that we were fa, facing a financial issue. Um, and this first. Page that you see is his report that he was telling them in the general fund, um. That we were operating in a, in a deficit and we were burning through our fund balance, um. And expending more than the revenues that we're bringing in. When I came on board, I created the second page. Um. Which just was to highlight how deep into the fund balance we were burning through. Um. So. It's, it's no surprise if you know how we're, how the state legislature has counties set up. Um, and receiving money. You know, we received one percent increase in property tax, yet CPI is three, four, nine, twenty percent. Depending on which COVID year you want to go back through. G F O A's best practices. States that entities should have a bare minimum of sixty days cash on hand and a, and a best minimum of a hundred and twenty days cash on hand. This ensures the entity's ability to adapt, adapt to financial situations, burdens, any unforeseen circumstances. Such as major pandemics, emergencies, whatever the case may be. So general fund in twenty twenty um, had two point eight million dollars that. That was, um, sixty-five days cash on hand, okay? In twenty twenty-four, we ended the year five point seven million dollars, um, increasing that days cash on hand to a hundred and thirty-six. Um, meeting that minimum threshold for the general fund. For cumulative reserve in twenty twenty, we had thirteen point two million dollars, um. In there of that, one oh nine dollars was two point six million and our regular reserves was ten point six million. So days cash on hand to budgeted projects. In reserves that we were able to use, should there be a catastrophe, would have been seventy-three days. For the other funds outside of the general fund. In twenty twenty-four, we've ended the year with twenty-one point five million dollars in reserves. Of that, one oh nine dollars is three point two million dollars, reserves eighteen point three million dollars. So bolstering that reserves to days cash on hand to budgeted projects in twenty twenty-four is a hundred and seventeen days, so still not at the. Hundred and twenty day best practices, but in a much better situation. To deal with any type of emergency and still be able to handle all of the contract projects that we have on the books today. Should another pandemic hit and the federal government now bail us out.
Thank you for stating that because when you stated the first one, I was like, where are we at today? I mean.
Yes.
That's just a financial indicator.
The lowest cash on hand was seventy-three days?
Uh, in twenty twenty, that was seventy-three days of um, cash on hand for all of those for road department. All of those other funds outside of the general fund, um, that all had contracts tied to them. Um, and products.
It's just nice to have a metric and. Chair and I talked about this, you know, you go too far one way, you're saving too much, you're not. You're not investing in programs, you don't have enough, you're not taking care of business, so having a metric from the, uh, it's just a good.
Yeah, financial met.
Benchmark.
You're looking at.
Yes.
And work.
Yes.
And another.
And what funds we're going into because. We may be doing well on interest income. But that's something I think you're, you need to be careful budgeting begins.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, because it's good now, but it may not be good next year.
It, it was good at the end of last year, it's not good at the beginning of this year, I mean, in, Richard.
Yeah.
Looking at my own personal, I can't. Um, yes. I'm not getting five percent anymore, that's for sure, um. For another perspective, a hundred and thirty-six days cash on, and I broke these up specifically general fund versus, versus cumulative reserve. Because general fund, we have that fund balance in there that takes care of all of our mandated services, right? The other, cumulative reserve handling all the other funds, um, and all those other funds are project and grant supported funds. So right now, we're dealing with grants being froze from the federal level, right? Um, we have. Contracts related to those grants, they, you know, I don't know what roads looking like, but um, should an emergency hit, we're not able to. Really get through and do the work or have the revenue to come in. We at least have the reserves for the hundred and seventeen days to support those project funds. Um. And a hundred and seventeen days, just so we're fully aware, um. You know, a quarter is ninety days on average, ninety-one point two five. So we're above four, four months there, um. For each one of them, quarter to four and a half. That, just to put a month perspective, a quarter, we're at least hitting a quarter worth to be able to make some adjustments should something happen.
I appreciate that because the hospital and our financial committee, that was a monthly discussion of days. Cash on hand.
Yes.
Was one of our trainers we followed every month. It, it's important.
It is important.
Definitely, don't want to dip down to close to half like we do.
Hospital, hospital.
Hospital will wait a long time to get paid sometimes.
Yeah, well, A R A P, it's all part of the trigger too.
Well, there was a point in time and I, my first year learning this role, um. That budget year would have been twenty twenty-one. Our fund balance cash in the general fund had dipped so low that I didn't have the funds there to cover some, um, supplementals. So I. We, when we get to that point, then those conversations really have to start happening of, uh, we can't just. Approve whatever's coming, coming forward after that general fund. So to have that buffer. To be within a quarter's worth of um, cash on hand, make a world of difference, not just to emergencies, but how do we adapt? The unknowns, the smaller unknowns that happen every year anyway.
Hundred and seventeen days go by pretty fast.
It does all years. And. Then, um, the next part of your packet is gonna be the budget presentation book. Um, like I said earlier this morning, I think it's important to understand where we were and how far, how far we've come. Um, although the, my current book does not meet G F O A standards, um, of their entire criteria. That was solely related around to, around um, strategic planning or priorities and goals of the board. Um, but with your work that you did on your very first workshop, um, I think we can achieve that goal this year. So the first book you're, you're gonna have what was um, done in twenty nineteen, this is my predecessor's work and where we are, um. You know, coming, coming forward. So that's where we were. Where we are, you know, we have. The first tab that you'll come to, in the beginning part of it, before that tab, you have the adoption books, you have, um. Some outline, understanding, um, of demographics within the county, um, about the county, some history, um. And. There's a page I keep in there every year and that's explaining the structural deficit that the county faces, um. By state legislation, um, what the development, budget development process looks like and a calendar of that. Um, our fund structure so that when you're going through the budget reports that you understand how those are laid out. The first tab is the budget in brief that rolls the entire budget and all of those like two hundred, three hundred pages of just financial reports. Rolling it up into understandable language and charts for that high level of view of what our revenues are. Um, the top five revenues, how they compare over prior years, um, what those historical revenues, going a little bit deeper, what they look like. The property tax dollars, trying to explain where your property tax dollar goes, um. And the levy rate showing that goes down every year, year over year. Landfill dollars, where that goes and what that supports, as well as the expenses and, um. I break down the expenses into program areas. They're not related to um, branches of government by any means, but they are related to community development, public safety, general government, human services. With an explanation of those, the budget books tend to be, they are color coordinated, so the program areas will be the same color across the entire budget and brief. Um. And when I get into the department sections. What program area that department falls into will usually have, be color coordinated back to that program area for that visual tie together. Um, talks about the employees in the county and um, what position or how much of our budget that takes up. And then there's a capital improvement plan in brief. Explaining what the capital improvement plan is, um. The projects, um. The projects, um, how the capital prove of plan is built, um, what that means. Um, public involvement in that and how that process, um. Goes from idea to an actual asset. Where the funding sources come from in order to fund those projects. And then the detail that you guys see through the preliminary and adoption process. That third tab is starting that detail of the actual um individual departments and funds. And I just, I just took a very, the very front part of it to show you, one department's first. Front and center, uh, happens to be adult probation, so you'll see how it's laid out, um. There's an overview of the general fund first, but then adult probation is color coordinated, um, to public safety. Program area, highlights the org chart, what the department does. And then um some key highlights, um, the statistics down below, how many uh, um staff. What the FTE count is, vacancy rate, budget to actual year-over-year expense. And then the required financial document behind it.
All right, I see like some of these like employee numbered budget positions, this was a twenty twenty-three.
It is a twenty twenty-three book, twenty twenty-four was. Yeah, twenty twenty-four was not able to get done due to, um. The jail transition, um, my time, this point in time in the year had to be diverted. Um, it is my goal to put together a budget and review instead of a budget and brief for the twenty twenty-four year. Um, the required budget documents are out there, but that's, the required documents are just the financial reports that it's really hard to understand. Um, un- unless you were in the budget all the time in my role, I, I find it really hard to. Lean any type of information from those documents, so it's my goal to, to do a year in review. And go backwards and do a budget review on the twenty twenty-four year. Lastly.
Yeah, I was gonna say, how much time?
This is the last one.
We have left because we have some guests here from the chamber.
Last section was.
But you're in review versus you, you call this one what?
Um, the budget and brief. So, goals, this is my last section, goals, that GFOA budget book award, um. Priorities summary, um, similar to the budget and brief. So I've handed um a document out to you, which is the city of Tigers. Tiger's strategic plan, um, this is. The direction where I would like to get to, um, something very similar to this with the um board of. Commissioners, um, priorities and goals, so that it, so that the community can understand. What you're working on. Um, and tie that back into the budget and brief in the budget book, um, this, this is very comprehensive. Um, strategic plan, that's not exactly what I'm going for, but a, a toned down version. To take those baby steps towards getting there. Um, I love the way that this one's laid out, I've been looking at the strategic plan for like. Um, two years now, so, um. I love how simple it is, how eye-catching it is and engaging, it can be, um, it can, it could be either a simple book. Um, folded in half and, or an actual electronic document that can be interactive as well. Um, another goal of mine would be to take our budget and make it a very simplified tri-fold. Handout that could, that somebody can pick up, I mean, um. It'll, it'll be a challenge, but that's been my goal, um, see if I could do that. I've already talked with the assessor, discuss some collaboration because I'd like to just. Property tax seems to be the number one misunderstood, um, item within our budget, so taking one page of that. Dedicating it to a brief overview of property tax and then just a high-level budget, um. In a simple tri-fold, if I can do it. Incorporate debt service, um, debt reduction plan. There's RCW out there now that is highlighting that we need to have debt service estimates, so I want to start that process. And digitalizing the capital improvement plan for project completion in comparison to budget. Um, to be able to have that long-term strategic planning for any rolled over budgets or rolled over projects into the next budgets. That's a goal of mine, um, then. It's also my goal to do some um training videos for in-house training so that. People can always go back to review those videos. I've incorporated a couple of different pieces of software this last year, um, on training. That have been, that have seemed to be pretty useful and user-friendly, um, for directors and their staff. And then finally, um, a budget one-on-one video for the website for the public. To help them guide through, a guide through the budget and what that actually is and how it explains some of those pieces.
So what are you gonna do in your spirit?
Lofty goals, but it's been my, it's been my vision.
Yeah, I appreciate you touching on taxes, it just seems a lot of people just don't quite understand the process and. Because we, we appraise the property, we collect the taxes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
It's complicated.
Yes, it is.
It's extremely complicated and. So, yeah.
Yeah, mo- most, most people believe property taxes are. Very much a hundred percent locally spent.
Correct, fifty, I, I'm gonna round up here, fifty percent goes to state schools. Of every tax dollar, every dollar, fifty percent goes to state schools. The county general will give about thirteen cents on every dollar. If you have no questions, I'm.
No.
The, the, the only thing that we've had meetings about this, so like thi- this tiger is very much white salmon as a simplified version of something like this. Through all those things because, you know, they were so detailed and, and organized and you've, you've been heading this direction for, for years. The, the only thing that I would like to see added to this is, is kind of a dashboard where someone could look at it, you know, so they. And, and, and look at the whole general budget and things kind of, kind of on one page and then they get, then they.
Simplistic version.
Yeah, and, and like you said, this, this is well organized and simplistic, but when you're going through.
Link it to the budget.
Each air, each area, yeah.
So you're, you're speaking my language and I love it.
And, and so, and. On that dashboard, it even covers some, some past history. Where they can look at like, oh, here's what we've been doing, the, the direction we're heading.
Yes, I, I love that thought process and yes, that would definitely be something I would dive down if, if we can get there.
Thank you and thank you for going through the new program.
Yes, absolutely.
The agendas. Please feel free. Thank you for.
Yeah, my whole day for being like this, otherwise I'd get too stressed. Can I share my screen?
You have a good group of people, Rob.
He's an amazing.
Are you saying this because it's tape?
No, I say to everybody who will listen, he's amazing.
So you're gonna do Goldendale and Mount Adams?
We're gonna, the last year we did two, a presentation together, this year we're just, we're here in support of each other, but we're sorry. So, um, my name is Hannah, first off, I know I have a. Um, and I just wanted to, I love doing these things, I like to stay pretty transparent with the county and we got a lot of funding from them. From you, uh, for lodging tax. So in this packet, there's a data breakdown on our visitor information. Uh, stats, a lot of website stats. Uh, and then further in the packet, there's an annual report on strategic plan and then our new member services, which I'm really excited about. Um, so to start, um, our visitor information stats are as follows. Um, twelve hundred seventy-eight in-person visitors. Seven hundred and seven phone calls and eighty-three contact us forms. You're gonna find that our footprint is more digital than in person. And that's just because we've done a lot of work on that front and, um. It's just all available online and people like that. So we leverage, uh, most primarily three different channels for our marketing and reach. Our social media, uh, we do our website, uh, actually two different websites. Um, and then paid marketing through different channels like the Sentinel, uh, Wind River Publishing and things like that, all for tourism promotion. Um, that does not include anything membership or general chamber related, uh, except for our Facebook, the Facebook's kind of, you know, it just. So, um, social media engagement, we peaked in Q two on the majority of our platforms. Our Facebook had a peak engagement of thirty-four thousand three hundred. Uh, Instagram seventeen thousand four hundred and TikTok just about forty-six hundred. We also send out a monthly tourism email that covers, you know, upcoming events, we also highlight any business. Um, if, whether it's eat, play, stay or shop, um, and that, it doesn't matter if they're a member or not. We just do that because it's part of our tourism promotional services that we provide. Um, I am also really happy to share that our Facebook engagement right now, as of today, is at sixty-four thousand. Um, which is pretty awesome. Um, so then our website, we, um, we have two different websites. One of them's with the observatory, which I'll get into a little bit more later, um, but this is what our website looks like now. It's available on your desktop, on your phone, um, we've had some additions to it, um, it's kind of gotten a facelift. Uh, we have a community hub with all the businesses and organizations, um, and then explore central and eastern Clinton County, that's our service area. From Lyle to Middleton is what we say, um, and that includes eat, play, stay, shop, observatory. And then we also recently added a tab for the murals downtown that Art at the Heart did, uh, we find that a lot of people like to stop because there's hidden gems in all of them. Um, then previously the chamber was on kind of like a separate website, it's like a second face. Um, I added it to this one, it just makes it more user-friendly, so that has all of our information. And then we're also in the process of adding a business development tab, which I'm really excited for, um, I'm teaching myself a lot about what. Business development means as I'm adding it, um, so. Kind of a one-stop shop where they can get all the links that they need for state licensing, insurance or commercial real, real estate, um. SBDC resources, both links to both different chambers depending on where they're out in the county. Um, it's also going to include, uh, county workforce data and economic data, I just. I, I'm young, so I haven't been through all that, so I have to teach myself what that is as I'm putting it on there. Uh, so that's really exciting, nice facelift, it's gonna get another facelift at the end of June, but I'm just. Overall, very pleased with the amount of information that is on this website now, it's really awesome. So that website, um, saw sixteen thousand users in twenty twenty-four, forty hundred, forty-one hundred of them were from Seattle. And eleven thousand calendar views, you can also see that our directory just about hit fifty-five hundred. Um, all of these are up about hundred to a hundred and thirty percent compared to the previous year. Uh, we spend a lot of time, um, when I'm, you know, at home, uh, Facebook surfing. Um, if people are looking for something and everything going down, we link them back to the website, directory listings, calendar, things like that, so those really have piked up over the last year. We also covered the cost of a, a website for the observatory. Uh, this one received fifty thousand total views, thirty-eight thousand of which were in the United States, uh, thirteen thousand from Port. Uh, Seattle and thirty-four hundred from Portland, they also got some from Germany and Australia. And we just do this because we, we find it beneficial than the observatory being locked up with every other state park. You know, they have one space where people can access the same information and we just cover the cost of it and the observatory updates it, they have access to all that stuff. So, um, other than tourism, we do have some other focuses, um, tourism has been a big focus of our chamber for quite some time. Um, now that I'm entering in my second year as executive director, my third year with the chamber, we're starting to branch out a little bit. So business startup services, we help make sure that everybody who is interested in starting a business is. Going to the right place, has access to the right resources, like the business development tab on our website, but we also do it in person. Um, we kind of consult, um, a lot of times I am a counselor, um, to kind of hear how hard it is and brainstorm ideas to help them. Uh, we also have our chamber membership, which we have now redone. Our past structure was a fair share rate, the benefits were the same, but you paid more based on the amount of employees. The current structure that we are in the process of transitioning to is tiered, so they can pick a tier with the benefits that coincide. For, that work for them with their business where they're at and it's flexible, you know, they can upgrade, they can downgrade. All those sort of things, and then we have different, um, à la carte items, so it's, it's, it's more customizable instead of, um. You know, you have to pay this or it doesn't, and it doesn't penal, penalize our businesses for growing, which is fantastic, I really felt like.
You, you're gonna get more membership by doing that to your approach?
Well, I do, um, especially because we're offering monthly and quarterly payment options, um, but we've also with this new structure. Previously, we offered a name and phone number directory listing to any business in Click attack county. With this new structure, that is being rebranded as a freemium rate. As a membership, so any business in Click attack county can be a member of the chamber at no cost. And that includes, you know, name, phone number and logo directory, access to networking events. And access to our member portal, which we upload on-demand webinars, um, like this Hannibal workshop that we did. Um, a couple of weeks ago, um, this is uploaded as a digital version on our website. Uh, so yes, I do feel that way, um, since we started the transition process, I've actually gotten a handful of premium members. Or freemium members anyway, um, who plan to, as their business grows, upgrade their investment into the chamber so they can reap more. Benefits and services from the chamber. So, and then with that new structure, we have benefits that and services that we've not offered before. Uh, because previously our structure hadn't been looked at or adjusted in, uh, well, price-wise, uh, about ten years. I don't know if they've ever changed the structure in the lifetime of the chamber, which is just about forty years, so it was time for an update. Um, we also do some partnerships, in May of last year, we did a pub talk with Mid Columbia Economic Development District. They got, they kind of have this grant that they go after every year, uh, and then it just allows them to collaborate, I believe Tamara does it as well. Um, twenty twenty-five, it's not gonna be a pub talk, I don't think it's gonna be like a one-on-one social media consultation. On how to maximize that for your business, because social media is an amazing free resource. Uh, we also have some partnerships with SBDC, especially with their new rep, um, she's actually gonna be co-hosting our February Business After Hours downstairs here. So it's gonna allow her to meet with businesses that she may not have met with in the past of, or know about, um, and have. Let them kind of maximize the resources that are available for them, because that's free, so they should know about it. Um, the chamber also supports large-scale projects. Mostly if it promotes economic development, livability, jobs, all those things, the board will vote on it and then we'll do what we can to promote that. Project or business or corporation. Uh, we do a lot of work in this creative sector, our Art at the Heart, the Murals Downtown, um, that committee is actually looking at branching out outside of Goldendale. It's very, been very Goldendale-centric, which is fantastic, but now that we have the creative district that we're in the process of establishing, that committee is like. Looking at doing some stuff in Lyle and Middleton and so on, and different engagement activities for the community and youth and things like that. Um, and then the creative district, it is a geographical area, that's how it's defined with the state. It's a state-level certification that can help with livability, um, community morale. And then, you know, it's also an economic development project as well and supports tourism, because people like to see. Uh, go to places that are bright and colorful and, and Instagrammable experience, if you will, that's, you know, a, a big thing nowadays. Uh, and then shop local promotions. Two years ago, we did a holiday passport, uh, which was really great, it's a little complicated, so this year I rebranded it as a shop local holiday bingo. Uh, it worked really well, it got our community into businesses that they may not, um, may not have known were there. Uh, so we're gonna continue that and I'm also, it says promotions because I'm adding another one in May, we're gonna launch it at our Home and Garden Show. For Small Business Month and it's gonna be a scavenger hunt that's social media engagement. So tag your business, um, use the hashtag kind of thing and it ups their social media engagement, which means anybody with a Facebook page can participate. Um, it's not just for retails like the shops, uh, small business holiday bingo is, that's, that's a shop local. Uh, so for twenty twenty-five, and I'm so sorry if I talk too fast, it's a bad habit of mine. Number twenty twenty-five, we, in your packet that I gave you, be an adopted strategic plan. Um, I like to think it's pretty comprehensive, though I have never done one before this, so, but I think it's good. Um this is gonna focus on business development. Monthly training sessions for businesses like this Canva one, the next one that we're doing is in February. It's gonna be a website design one, we're also working with KVH to do a human resources one. Um and it's gonna be monthly on the third Thursday of every month at the Chamber, and then they're gonna be recorded and uploaded to our member portal, so they're easily accessible. Um we're also going to increase our engagement with Click attack county businesses, primarily through that freemium membership option. Uh we believe that that's gonna bring a lot of people in and not, it's gonna keep it like an exclusive club, because that's what membership is, but it's also gonna open the door. For businesses that may not have thought it was a possibility before, or it's not been their financial capacity to be a member of the Chamber. Uh we also want to, through our member portal, build a strong library of digital on-demand resources. We recently announced a Grow with Google partnership, it's something that they offer to nonprofits, it doesn't cost anything. And it includes uh slide decks and webinars and like all this exclusive access stuff, which we have now put on our member portal. Uh which really enhances that offering. Uh we also want to optimize and grow and grow the Chamber, so uh increasing the Chamber's resources. Investing in our staff so that our staff has the capacity and the knowledge to do more. Um my Board of Directors uh in August. I went to Academy in um Sacramento. And it was a three-day comprehensive training by the Western Association of Chamber Executives. It's three years, so I'll be going back again this year and actually um in two weeks, I'm going down to Henderson, Nevada for their annual conference. Um so we're now a member of that organization, which opens the door for so much digital resources. It's insane bylaws, any- anything that we might need. Um cause it's probably been done before by another Chamber, so it's gonna be there and we can see what works for us as we grow. Uh and then uh we want to kind of explore alternate funding sources. Uh right now, our budget is primarily grants. Uh I want to be more sustainable by exploring other options, um hence kind of why the membership change. Um the more value, the more people are gonna invest, because we're providing more for them. Um and then different things like a coworking space at the Chamber office, which would bring in some money. I know right now, we're trying to explore having EV chargers at the office. Um there are a bit of a tight approach for that, so we'll see how it works, but um it's an interesting uh interesting thing. Um and then partnerships, we want to be more, as I've as I've gotten more comfortable in this position. Um we want to be more involved with projects that are coming in to help make Click attack county an appealing place to do business. Um and help, you know, with the different facets of that. Um partnerships with SBDC, I am um in talks with Tessa about doing a like a three-month session, weekly webinar screenings. Uh at the Chamber, that would, it would just be a screening of what they have available through their, through their resource hub. And then we would also help people get signed up as a client through Tessa. Um to make sure it helps them, helps us, kind of thing. Um and then continue to promote Click attack county as a destination to a large audience through our Facebook. We actually share Facebook now, actually, Tamara maintains ownership of it, but I hope operate it and share stuff to it. Um so working more on that. Um and then you'll find that this doesn't really include a lot of tourism stuff on this slide. That's just because I want tourism to ebb and flow as the funding is available for it. You never know what it's gonna bring year to year, we could have, we're gonna have a baseline, obviously. But it's uh additional large-scale projects are dependent on the lodging tax funding or grant funding from alternate sources like the state or whatever that are available. So other than that, um that's about it, so um I'm really happy to be here, thank you. It's been a wild ride so far, so.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm really sorry if I talk a lot, I actually talk very fast.
I use your website a lot.
Oh, good.
What parades kind of uh.
Yeah.
You know, what's going on in Bickleton, as simple as that.
Yeah.
Uh I I I used it a lot.
I like to think it's pretty comprehensive, it's some work, but it's getting there.
I mean, like the rodeos, what weekends are rodeos, I can put on my calendar and I I used it a lot.
Yeah, well, and that's primarily what, who's visiting our calendar and our website is the community. Um there is a big chunk from, you know, like Seattle, like you saw, um but the community likes to have access to a community calendar. Um I know the Sentinel does one, but you know, it's it's a little bit of a different flavor, so. Other than that, I mean, I'm happy to be here, thank you. Um and I, I'll turn it over to Tamara now so she can run it.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
I just wanna say, I've been down at the Mount Adams Chamber since April two thousand sixteen, it's been nine years this April. And I've worked with some different people at the Golden Dale Chamber in that time. And I'm really enjoying my relationship with Taya better than any prior director. Uh she has just been a super powerhouse, especially since last August when she went to that training. I didn't even know she had went to that training, and I'm seeing the White Salmon and seeing all the stuff pumping out of the Chamber appear, and I'm like. What the hell is going on up there?
New ideas.
I think my board felt the same way, cause I came back, I I'm only twenty-two, right? I had never been to any like conference or anything like that, and I came back, I'm like, guys, we have to do all of this, all of this year. I I got a rude awakening on that, but I think they were kind of annoyed at how much I talked about it.
Sounds like my old Boston utility, come back from reading and had all these ideas on.
Yeah.
Slow down a little bit.
I'm grateful for putting into a strategic plan and everything, but yeah, it's, it was really great, it was really great.
But as you can see, she's very impressive and I am, I am very happy to have her as a partner to work with uh what we're doing for the county.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
My presentation is nowhere shiny and uh metriced out, so. What I have here is just some information, really kind of recapping what we accomplished in twenty twenty-four. Um it was a very busy year for us, as most years are, we juggle a lot of different projects. Uh as you hopefully know, our visitor center for the Mount Adams Chamber is located just west of the Hood River White Salmon Bridge on SR fourteen. It's a very prime location for a visitor center. Um we get a lot of guests, uh people that come into the visitor center who just cross the bridge to see what's on the other side. And or they're coming down from the Vancouver area on fourteen, and we were right there with a open sign and they stopped to see what they can do. When we're able to engage with people, we often can change their planned itinerary. Or at least make them aware of options and experiences that they maybe didn't have a clue about. And give them up to the little community of White Salmon up on the hill that's somewhat hidden, or to stop in Benjen, or to go further out into uh Click attack county. One of the things that we really do down there at the Chamber that's become pretty robust for us, beyond the actual helping of um direct visitor intera- interactions. Or our local uh community members who come in with needs, is applying for an administering grants. And um in twenty twenty-four, we secured twelve different grants for a total of four hundred and twenty-one thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars. The biggest one of those was an Evergreen Manufacturing Grant from the Department of Commerce. That was for two hundred thousand dollars for a local company in Benjen to do a research and development project that should. Uh it it actually is uh right at completion, we're working this week to get that finished up. But it is anticipated to bring twenty to thirty new jobs into the community in the next year to two years. So that is um one I'm especially proud of being involved with and and helping to make sure that they got that money to do that project. Uh we also really do depend quite heavily on lodging tax funds, not only what we are granted from the county. But from the s- city of White Salmon and city of Benjen. We use those grants specifically for tourism marketing of all the entities, but also some specifics for events. White Salmon has a little uh larger pool of money, and so we're able to really uh utilize those funds. Specifically to do things like the White Salmon's Wine Walks, the Wildflower Festivals. We began a new Makers Market once a month this year, it was very popular. And really just doing things to bring people into our downtown area to get them familiar with the businesses that are down there. Uh to entice them to come inside the doorways that they maybe don't necessarily shop or have never been inside before. And or just to know what's down there and be able to recommend it to others. We did have a a new event this year, which was a mountain town throwdown, it was a street party. We partnered with Everybody's Brewing and that was uh very well received and anticipating to become an annual event. Uh the Taste of the Gorge was a one-time thing that we did under the Columbia Gorge Tourism Alliance with the. Gorge Food Trails and the businesses of Click attack county were uh able to participate at no cost in that. Because of a grant from the county last year, so thank you for that. Um that was specifically driving traffic during the shoulder season to the food uh beverage type of tea businesses. And then getting some uh state, a State of Washington Tourism Grant money to be able to do, uh to build up our rural assets. Um videos and photos that we can use, not only we, the Chambers, but the cities, the businesses themselves, or any entity that might want to. And including State of Washington Tourism, while also using those images to promote uh around the state. Another thing that we were able to do last year was partner with the Art of Community nonprofit. And become the Big Art North Shore, which is responsible for bringing big art into Benjen and White Salmon. We were able to install um. Two in White Salmon and three in Benjen this like last year, so five installations of art. One of them is a permanent installation, two uh the other four will be two-year rotations. And then with our Wine Walks that we're doing in White Salmon, we're actually taking the funds, the proceeds from that. And turning it back into a beautification fund, so from those beautification dollars, we were able to buy. Uh benches, matching garbage cans for our downtown area that had mismatched um falling apart benches scattered here and there. So we have a lot of a consistent look that's nice, um easier for the public works crew to work with. Also did some holiday decor, um helped with a mural that went into downtown. And just really were able to put um, you know, a little over twenty-three thousand dollars back into our downtown. So those are big, big wins as far as I'm concerned. Um and then the four tourism initiatives that we took on behalf of the county was the distribution of our Click attack county touring map. The year prior, we printed a large enough um amount of them to basically carry us for two years with the printing. And we're pretty much ran out of that now, but we were also then used it to put certified distribution, which puts that map um. At the Portland Airport, in the key visitor centers around the area. And throughout the different racks where people, visitors are often stopping and looking for ideas of where to go and what to do. We advertise Click attack county in the Washington State Senate Byways Map, which is a map that is free, it is um. Hand it out all over the Pacific Northwest. Operational support for the Heritage Plaza Visitor Center down there, uh as I mentioned earlier, and then the Taste of the Gorge uh. Food Trails Program. So looking ahead, we're just looking to continue with the partnerships. Um working with Taya is definitely um top on my list because she's a rock star. I'm just riding her coattails with all the glorious things she's doing here. No, we um, we really do appreciate being able to work with partners, the cities, the KED, the county. It takes all of that, um certainly the Chambers on their own could not make any of this happen, it's just about being um. Kind of a hub, I guess, a liaison to the different things. Because of our status, we are able to take these grants that are not necessarily available to all. Um but they they are something that we're like eligible to win and to then do good works here with those monies. Um and I think that's sort of it. On my last page there, I've got our visitor data log um information. We had just under three thousand total visitors that actually came in the door. Um our networking events are very robust and we like to continue uh seeing those happen and. Then on the very back page is just graphics so that there's something pretty that you can look at besides words. And then and then our very last page, I do just to touch base on this. One of the biggest things that we have going on down in our part of the county is a tourism initiative that is really based on the paranormal. Um this overview sheet is going to give you just a summary of that. You may have possibly already heard of some of the paranormal activities that are happening in the county. Um Margie's Outdoor Store is the hub for that. They really turned this into a serious marketing strategy. And it is something that James, who owns that business, has invited everybody to participate in. You can do it in in a, in a fashion that costs your business nothing, or you can invest and make it something a little bit bigger. The one key thing that I think is really important to realize about this is in comparison, two thousand eighteen, under this paranormal tourism as a thing. It tells us this Scotland tourism. Determined that the Loch Ness Monster was driving fifty-four million dollars a year incremental rent revenue to that.
That are.
Just to because of that Loch Ness Monster mystery. It is a true marketing strategy that can work. We are already seeing the increase in traffic down at Margie's. Because of what they put out, he spends a lot of his efforts on marketing this promotion. And in fact, is now, basically last year, we had um some TV. Production crews that came into the area and did some teaser reels. They were taking this back to big level media companies. However, James realized that um as as the conversations moved down the road. These big companies are not invested really in the livability of Click attack county. They just wanna come in here and make their money and then leave us with the service that might remain afterwards. Um and that's not in alignment with with where, you know, the goals of what James has with this at all. And so he has actually started his own company and put up his own money to basically mimic what the plan was with this TV production. So something is going to be produced this year called Gorge Mysteries. It'll be ended up going out on a YouTube channel format, there'll be a ten thousand dollar cash prize for um. Compelling physical evidence, and we do anticipate that this is going to bring visitors to the area. We are working right now uh applying for a State of Washington Tourism Grant. That will help us basically create this rural tourism playbook, and we wanna get ahead of this. I can also say potential surface, because sometimes when things really just go wildly ballistic beyond what you anticipated. Things can quickly get out of hand with um traffic issues, people trying to camp where they are, you know, just whatever it might be. Searching rescue might be really um overly burdened, such as what happened with the big foot searchers there around holidays. Academia County, uh we wanna prevent any of those kind of issues, and so that's why we're trying to get in front of this. Um this grant from the S W T will really lay things out so that everybody understands what the parameters are. What's been done and and how it's all gonna fit together. So James would like to come up here and meet with the um, meet with all of you and actually share a little more, be able to answer your questions on this specifically. Um it is going to be actually formally announced on May fourth, which is Paranormal Day. And so between now and then.
Paranormal?
Fourth.
Okay, then I'll fit right in.
Yes, so anyways, that's my wrap-up, it's just leaving you with some teasers on uh the Gorge Tourism Initiatives coming out of White Salmon and Benjen. And I just thank you again for having us up here, it's really nice to be able to tell you what we've been doing on behalf of the county. And what we hope to be doing as we move forward. Any questions or any other advice?
I thank you, I I had no opportunity, didn't get to sit through the whole meeting on the tourism, kind of tourism funds. The allocations, uh since I had another meeting at one o'clock, but interesting discussion. Discussions and there's, I I was reading, you know, where some of the funding is, just seem to be going down and down from the county. Be handed out and more people asking.
Yep.
Uh so I appreciate you looking, other avenues.
Trump Foundation.
Yeah.
That's my goal, Trump Foundation, Trump Chamber.
Is there unity between the the uh Chamber websites? Is that, is that all done in each individual department, or is that done somewhat on the national?
Two separate websites.
Yeah, two separate websites, but.
But they're linked.
Yeah, I have the different links, so like on that business development page, she's been linked as a business resource. Um and actually, I'm linked on there as well, because, you know, uh and that's, and then uh I think. I think she's linked somewhere else on the tourism side of things, um but I have to take a look, honestly, there's other stuff that's taken.
But I mean, from from nation, from the national level, you guys are responsible for your website all on your own.
And when you say national level, let's just clarify, do you mean like Chamber of Commerce national?
Yeah.
We are not affiliated as a national.
Totally different.
Not at all.
Totally different.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I I know there's different one, but it's, I didn't realize it's.
In my understanding, the national level of the Chamber of Commerce is very political, and that's not something that we get involved with at all.
Yes, we are like our own nonprofit, so we're not even associated with the state. The state has its own um, you know, there's like the Department of Commerce. The state has its own um, you know, there's like the Department of Commerce, and then there's uh W C C E, Washington Chamber of Commerce Executives. We're not affiliated with them. We may be a member, but we're not under the same umbrella.
So we are actually five oh one C six, business nonprofit is the status, the Chamber's.
Yeah, Business Association, so a little bit different.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I I didn't hear about the Skamania search and rescue. There was a run in with Bigfoot.
There was no, two people from Portland went out right around Christmas to Skamania County to search for Bigfoot. And then they did, they ended up dying of exposure. They they weren't prepared with like. Like it's their clothing or anything, and the weather got turned and. They didn't make it out of the woods. So. And that's, you know, that's just, it's it's just as simple as that. People think, I'm gonna go out for the night and look for Bigfoot, you know, my gosh, and not really even. It is, you know, we are, you know, Giver Kisha National Forest, and some of our, you know, worthy areas are just as. Desperate, but like you can get out there and get stuck in the weeds right now.
Yeah.
So.
I just appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
So how how's how's uh, how's Mount Adams' website?
Our ma- our website's good.
It's good.
It is, I think so. I mean, we um both of us have a system that is basically our website is a portal.
Yeah, you're a chamber master, I'm a grower, but they're operated the same.
Our member management system, the website is a portal out of that.
Yeah.
So it's all, it makes it much easier for us. We're not doing work here and then having to go over and put it here. Everything flows from the member portal.
Yeah. It's really nice.
And we do have an interactive version of the Click It Tech County, the the hard copy touring map. See, it was part of our grant request.
Yeah, I I have.
There is an interactive online version of that map as well, so we share that and keep it updated.
It has a hundred and ten thousand views on it, that one. I just looked it into me, so it's really good.
On the other, yeah.
Yeah, on the website, yeah.
I I even like the other map. I mean, I think we were up in the North Cascades and stopped, said, what's at the Chamber? We picked it up, and then the other day after the tourism meeting, I thought, I don't look at the map I picked up there. Yeah, why go in, we are on there.
Good.
Yeah.
You know, the 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 events, the events on the West Side have been amazing and uh keep keep getting better every year, and so.
Yeah, I'm very, I mean, it's, it is a lot of work, but they they are bringing people to town. Um our last wine walk, we had people from California, uh Ridgefield, Portland. I mean, they were, they were coming from more than fifty miles away. That's always my great foundation of. Everything we do has to be triggering people from more than fifty miles away. Get here, spend the money, stay the night.
Now, we're, I I'm real close to downtown, and so we just open our doors and windows and that that the Mount Hood Throwdown, you know, we just listen to the music all night long and. So, that's good.
Yeah, it's good stuff going on.
Great, well, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna come on.
Keep up the good work.
Yes.
I'll try.
It's underneath the Bigfoot.
Well, yeah, it's all right, I was saying, Commissioner Rastlinia's comments. I was trying to think of what I even did yesterday that I love. Last week that we haven't discussed. I I did have a meeting with uh R T C yesterday, Regional Transportation. Executive Director. Come to find out, we do receive funds from the R T C or senior services. And funds that help on our transportation system. So, that's good. They did say, yeah, they do spend quite a bit of money, more on parking on the transportation, but they do, they are helping with the bridge. Oh, my tab, right? He says ninety-five. Bridge. I was trying to think of meetings last week, there were several meetings. I'm glad you have your take out.
Uh yeah, so I I reached out and uh with Mayor Marlin, White Salmon, and Roger, who is considered interim city manager. It's his his title. Um he did that back in two thousand twenty-two. Um and last week and started this week, it's just been getting thrust into all all the boards and all the community meetings. Oh, oh, I know you went to a movie.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is that Friday or Thursday?
Friday evening. Yeah, yeah, actually.
Yeah, I I I was not popular enough to get on that, but I didn't, I didn't sign up early.
No, you had to sign up way early. They are gonna have some more showings of them. Actually, there were some uh.
How many people were at that? That was at the Discoveries, huh?
Yeah, I was at Discover, I'm mad, right? Must have been a couple hundred people. The whole, all, everything was full. But.
Good food, was there food?
Yeah, there was a bit of food and then the movie and. Good about the history of Rock Creek Band, that's right. Yeah, that was good. Yeah, that's right. It's like I need to get back to my calendar and then I could. It's amazing how fast things are moving. It's like, wow.
Right, we had a Columbia Gorge Homeowners Association meeting this week, tonight's Casey Pita.
Yes. Uh, well. But I will be recessing for the workshop on Thursday. They see Lori potentially like to talk about the Click It Tech mail site. She mentioned airport. I wanted to go back. We're only gonna be meeting from nine thirty probably till twelve. Cause have other meetings. I really wanted to try to surround back to our priorities. Some of the discussion, you know, as simple as there have been discussion about the parking situation. I just talked about a couple times now. It's like, well, we just need to surround these.
And if 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 we call that, so can can we extend past a little bit of the afternoon or do you have meetings?
No, I don't. Maybe we do. Look at the calendar. Was it Lori that had uh? Uh something going on that in the afternoon?
Uh in the afternoon? No, it was just, um I believe the afternoon is taken up by a another entity. But I don't think it's until like two o'clock. I can check on that.
Okay.
So if you guys need to go longer, you can.
Okay.
I will check on that right now.
Yeah, cuz I I think we have plenty of subject matter. I mean, the mail site's gonna be limited. Uh timelines.
I don't know how much. Discussion about.
On the airport.
About.
Yeah.
Airport and airport.
Yeah. Especially the airports, when. I understand. I just wanted to try to. Re-surround priorities again, but get moving.
Yeah, we need to get moving, yeah.
At least a couple things, and I I appreciate Lisa calling in today to talk about short-term rentals, because what level, what depth. I think that's what is hoping we can talk about. If it's just adopted in the R C W. You know, okay, great, if that's really boring, let's go with it, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's, I think that's an excellent start.
Yeah, it's a, yeah.
I always say, sometimes less government.
Each season communication.
Less, less government's the best government in some situations.
Yeah.
Um. I guess I need to go back to my notebook. Oh, I did meet uh. Last Friday also with Scott Tolan, who. Uh still involved with the property. Give him some. We had canvassing board training.
Meaning you both had that training separately, but. Online?
Oh, I slept really good then. My score was worse later on than it was originally on the signature training.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Signature trainings. Um. So do we, do we have anything else that we might be discussing about?
Oh, I guess that, I guess that.
I did. We're gonna go back over the goals and and I think that timing is about right because the first several weeks has just been. Taking on the information, taking on the budget, learning.
Yeah.
About the county direction, since Lori's only been on two years, and this is both our.
Yeah, mine's getting up to date. It's completely different format than what I do.
Now, now we can hit the ground running and.
Yeah. Uh, I did speak with the mayor Goldell yesterday. About they're putting together a meeting on February. I wanna say seventeen downstairs at noon. I I may have the date wrong.
I think February seventeen is the.
It's a Tuesday.
Sunday date.
Yeah, it's the same day as our meeting, and what I explained to him, we can all three come down. But we have to be back here at one o'clock for a meeting, so that was really difficult, but we'll try to make the meeting. I I go back by the email, but I didn't want to do it. I just said.
We gotta kind of put that on.
Yeah, just give you the heads up. We will be limited to our attendance at that meeting.
Uh, I I've never met the mayor of the DOWs or the city manager.
I haven't either. I I I know he.
So you're talking about the the DOWs or you're.
No, I'm talking about.
He's talking about Goldell.
I'm talking about Goldell, but he's saying the DOWs.
Yeah, I switched, so.
Nope, I followed him. I I followed him, and I think that was some. Uh discussion of trying to sit down with them on the airport. I'm assuming that. Could be the discussion we're having is, that's pretty much it about the airport that we need to have a sit-down meeting.
Yeah.
In discussion.
Then we'll call them or have a meeting with.
Yeah, actually, I'm in the worst of coordinating with the party now.
Okay.
Okay.
That's perfect.
Yeah. Oh, that's.
That's it for me.
Yeah, that's it for me.
So I moved to recess the regular meeting until Thursday, January thirtieth at two thousand twenty-five at nine thirty AM for a workshop.
Okay, I'll step down a second then. All those vendors, say hi.
Hi.
Hi.